This time I'm looking for a motion to excuse the councilwoman Smith for who is not with us at the moment. Mayor Pro Tim.
Motion to excuse councilwoman Frank, or sorry, councilwoman Smith.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Second motion.
Thank you have a motion in a second to excuse councilwoman Smith. Is there any discussion on the matter? Councilman Madera.
Yeah, she let me know that she's still on the call and she's planning to be late for this meeting.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Except for public hearings, persons who registered to speak under multiple items will be allowed to speak multiple times. Public hearing testimony will occur during the public hearing portion of the meeting. We'll continue this practice unless any council member wants to make a motion to go back to having public comment on resolutions and ordinances separately. Is there any council member wishing to make such a motion? Seeing none, we'll stay with the way that we have been. Next on the agenda is citizen communication per council policy. Citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address council on business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are before or may become before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. As a reminder, council must wait until administrative council business to take action in response to citizen communication. The city required advanced registration in order to participate in citizen communication for this meeting. If you're currently in this meeting to speak during citizen communication, please listen for me to call your name and the clerk will unmute you so you may begin. If you do not respond or are disconnected, you may miss your chance to comment. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. First on the agenda for speaking during citizen communication is Travis Smith. He now have three minutes.
Travis, you should be able to unmute yourself and then your three minutes will begin once you start speaking.
Oh, thank you, guys. I appreciate the opportunity to come before the city council tonight. And I know this is probably a little bit of a mute point because of what Governor Polis had passed. However, I'm just a small business owner in Commerce City. I live at 10168 Grand B Street here in Commerce City. And I work with small businesses. I'm a coach and a consultant to help them grow their business, to help them become more profitable. And the toll that the restrictions are placing on small businesses are unneeded. They're very harmful and they're hurting small business owners, whether they have a storefront or whether they operate out of their home. And I just want to come before the council tonight and plead with everybody on the city council to understand how important small businesses are in our community, in our city, in our state, in our nation, and to do everything within your power to fight back against what is happening at our state government level and make it so that we, small business owners, can continue to be successful. We don't necessarily lose our houses, our jobs, our retirements, or everything that we put into our small businesses. I believe the mask mandate is extremely unnecessary based on the data. And I would just encourage the council to do anything possible to get us out from underneath that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda is Nicole Baca.
Nicole, if you're present in the meeting, if you could use the raise hand function or star nine. Mayor Hughesman, I do not see Nicole Baca in the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is Jim Travis.
Jim, if you're in the meeting, if you could hit star nine or use a raise hand function. Mayor Hughesman, I do not see Jim Travis in the meeting either.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Audrey Spies.
Audrey, if you're in the meeting, you could use the raise hand function or star nine on your phone. Mayor Hughesman, I do not see Audrey Spies in the meeting either.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Megan Kaufman.
Megan, if you could use the raise hand function or star nine. Mayor Hughesman, I do not see Megan Kaufman in the meeting either.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Jennifer Thatcher.
Jennifer, if you could use the raise hand function or star nine. Mayor Hughesman, I'm not seeing Jennifer in the meeting either.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is Melissa Mitchell.
Melissa, if you could use the raise hand function or star nine. Mayor Hughesman, I do not see Melissa Mitchell in the meeting.
Rob Lockhart.
Rob, if you could use star nine or the raise hand function. Mayor, I do not see Rob Lockhart in the meeting either.
Brandon Fowler.
I do see Mr. Fowler. Give me just one moment. Brandon, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin speaking.
Hey, my name is Brandon Fowler. I live at 10801 Chambers Way in Commerce City. Personally, I like the idea of the mask mandate, especially for businesses, because if we end up having a lot more cases and a lot more deaths, I suspect they'll end up rolling back and going with that stay at home order. And in that circumstance, there's going to be a lot less people out there participating in the economy and the business. So for everyone's health and for businesses in our economy, I would prefer that we do continue with the mask mandate. That's all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Dire Lewis.
Dire fee could hit star nine. Oh, I see him. Dire, you are allowed to talk and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
My name is Dire Lewis. I'm a resident of Commerce City. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My concern is on public disclosure of lawsuits and notices of claims and local government transparency. This week I learned our mayor was admittedly intoxicated publicly with two other councilwomen while traveling on a taxpayer-funded trip at the National League of City Conference in Washington DC. The mayor forged the name of another councilman and charged $107 bar tab at the taxpayers' expense. Then I learned an executive session had taken place to hide from the public the fact that the city manager had retained an attorney and threatened to sue the mayor for slander. Then I learned the council approved an out-of-court $266,000 resignation agreement to the former city manager. The mayor and council provided only one way to learn about the notice to sue through a document request to the city clerk. But you had to know what specifically you were requesting. How would the public know what to ask for? There was no mention of the notice to sue in any council meeting nor any newspaper article, nor did the city announcement of McBroom's resignation mention the notice to sue. The mayor's Facebook page did not mention the notice to sue. The mayor stated, quote, "Because this is a personnel matter, I will not be making comments at this time," unquote. How is the public to learn of lawsuits and notices of claims brought against the mayor or council in the future if they only disclose in executive session? The city attorney said the city has no policy for disclosure of lawsuits or notices of claims. Citizens should have the right of disclosure of lawsuits and notices of claims. We should know what we're paying for before it is agreed by council. The council needs to introduce a policy of disclosure of lawsuits and notices of claims that would force the city to disclose all taxpayer settlements and judgments, including allegations of discrimination, defamation, harassment, or employee misconduct, regardless of the amount of the payment. I demand honest answers without denial, deflection, and shifts of blame. Let's take this time and opportunity to do something constructive everyone can benefit from in the future. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is George Samia.
George, if you are in the meeting, if you'd use the star nine function or raise hand function. Mayor Hughesman, I do not see George in the meeting.
Next on the agenda is Steve Struck.
I do see Steve. Give me just one moment. Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin speaking.
Mayor Council, my name is Steve Struck. 1628 Zerewee 119th Avenue. Twice in the last three weeks, we've been attacked by dogs while walking our dogs. Three weeks ago, one of our dogs was hit the head, bit in the head so severely that he's going to be blind in one eye. Another was bit three times by two German Shepherds that were walking without a leash from their house to their car. And the last couple of days ago, we were approached by a Doberman Pinscher who came out and attacked us. My wife yelled and screamed and he stopped and the owner pulled him away. What I'd like to know is, is it possible to raise the fines for having dogs not on a leash? Because whatever the fine is now, it's not really working. And why are vicious dogs who seriously hurt my dogs allowed to stay in the home? We were told it has to be two instances of a dog hurting another dog or one hurting another person. If a dog is deemed vicious, they should be taken out of the house. I don't think it's necessary for me to have to carry a can of pepper spray, a hunting knife, and a stun gun just to walk the dogs in my neighborhood. We're told we can't walk in the golf course, but it's the only place we feel safe. I'd rather take a chance to get hit and have the golf ball than have a German Shepherd or Doberman Pinschers attack me and my dogs and my wife. A commander McCoy with the Commerce City Police Department told me I have a right to defend myself, up to including buying a gun. I don't think it's really necessary for me to buy a pistol and get a concealed carry permit just to take my dogs for a walk in my neighborhood. We have to do something about these vicious dogs attacking other dogs and then not being taken out of the house. And then it's possible increases the fines on unleashed dogs. You know, where we always used to walk is a three, four block area. Now we're down to one block. We walk down the same street and come back because we're afraid to walk down those two streets where we were attacked the last three weeks. I'm not sure what we can do other than increasing the fines and getting the notice out there that the fines are going up and taking vicious dogs out of the home. The two times it's happened, the police officer, the animal control officer made me feel worse than the attacking dogs. I had actually almost begged the guy to take it to file a complaint because he didn't want to do it, saying it was the first time it's happened. I shouldn't have to beg of a police officer or animal control officer to file a complaint when I'm being attacked by a vicious animal. That doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Jacob Swedged. Sorry for probably mispronouncing that.
Jacob, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin speaking.
I'm sorry. I think I made a mistake in my registration. I don't have any comment at this time, but I do appreciate councils. I do appreciate council's time, so thank you.
Yeah. Next on the agenda is Katie Sanchez.
Katie, if you're in the meeting, if you could use star nine or the raise hand function. Mayor Hughesman, I do not see Katie Sanchez in the meeting.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Steve Douglas.
Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin speaking.
Okay. Thank you, council, mayor and council tonight for allowing us to speak at citizen communication. I have a few things here besides what's on the agenda. First thing is asking you again to pull the permits for extraction oil and gas. They've been through this process for the last two years. They're in financial direns now. They're going through a bankruptcy and they thought they were going to be able to pull out of that, but things are not going as great as they want it to be. So I urge the council to consider pulling those permits because they are not financially stable in order to do any business with anyone. The other issue I have is when you go and sign up to do the public comments or the virtual signup, I urge council to make this process a lot easier. Maybe even add a button where the e-comment button is on the Let's Start. And the other one is South Platte Crossing. This will be the second attempt for Karma City to actually buy this, purchase this property. Their first time was done back in 2018. Back then, there was several workforce meetings to develop a relationship and it's just to see what potentially could be worked out with the city using a compliance space there. I believe that price was less than a million back then. Right now, the current price is a million with the $25,000 earnest money to execution of this agreement if it's approved. And I urge council not to go forward with this. That's too much money. We just went through the Huneing building for 500,000 plus 600,000 expenses. This will be about the same thing because you would have to renovate the floor at a given time, plus you have ongoing cost. And then I'm not sure if I'm allowed to, I'll wait until the hearing to speak on the other issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Christie Douglas.
Steve, am I correct in assuming Christie's there with you?
You are.
All righty, Christie, you'll have three minutes once you begin.
All righty, thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Christie Douglas. I'm a citizen of Commerce City. I've got several things that I'd like to comment on tonight. First of all, there was somebody who said that they represent small businesses and they were against people having to wear masks. I just want you to know for everyone who's hearing or listening in out there that I would think that requiring people to make, to wear masks would improve business because then you don't have to worry about getting sick from other people who are frequenting that business. Wearing a mask is only a matter of respect for other people. It doesn't kill you to wear a mask. The more people who wear masks, the more likely we are to get through this pandemic quicker than, than we would if people didn't wear masks. So I want everyone to consider that. The next item that I'd like to talk about, there were two items actually that were in a meeting several weeks ago and I don't know which meeting it was. I didn't have time to look it up. So the first one was on a consultant fee for $700,000 that was presented to council by our community, what is the title? Community? Community Development Director. And I could not believe that during a pandemic to present a consultant fee for $700,000 for a comprehensive plan is just unbelievable to, unbelievable to me. And I can't even believe that it was brought forward. I was on a comprehensive plan committee a while back and the cost was only $90,000. We had a lot of citizens on it. And we thought at that time, $90,000 was a huge commitment for a comprehensive plan. So I would ask if this comes back again, that you seriously look at this and, and examine where that money is going and how, how it would come to $700,000 because that just doesn't make sense to me at all. And the other item was a 20-year extension of the Metro District Rebate Agreement. That's been in place for 20 years. That was with, I believe, Shay Holmes. And now it looks like Oakwood is asking for an extension of that same agreement. It's 33% of 3.5, the 3.5% sales and use tax. And if you calculate that, that's 1.5%. There's no reason for the metro districts to ask for such an agreement or an extension of any kind of agreement. It doesn't seem to me that there's any accountability and how that money would be used. And to me, they're asking to access the pot of gold at the end of the taxpayer rainbow and that is not acceptable. So those are things I'd like you to look out for and please do a moratorium on oil and gas when that conversation comes up. We need time to examine the ramifications of oil and gas development in neighborhoods. The oil and gas is going to be there when the time comes to extract it. And there is no need for rush. So I don't care how long you've worked on this. The citizens come first. The public comes first. I don't care how much people are anticipating as far as making profits off of this. Leave it in the ground until we can make sure that it can be extracted safely. And I really would ask that you would consider a moratorium at least six months so that you can take a real good look at, at what will happen if we decide to drill. Because once the wells are in, they're in. We can't turn back. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Outside of the public hearings that we have this evening, Steve, have you discussed everything that you wanted to discuss? You're signed up on multiple ordinances and resolutions.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if I could talk on the resolutions. I didn't know if there was public comments or not.
You're signed up to speak on two resolutions and four ordinances, so this is your opportunity to do so.
Okay, thank you. I will, on the ordinance, I will pass on those, those, those seem to be just fine on the resolution. Understand as far as the artwork on the metro rail line, just to make sure that Commerce City has control of what they would like to see there and not what RTD wants to put in there because you know, we're not in control of those funds and if there are funds that RTD has set aside appropriate for artwork that, that should go to Commerce City for their artwork and for them to go to that board in order to get the art done. The other issue I already had stated with the South Platte Crossing, I just want to make sure council up to speed on what's going on, which you do have the information, but it'd be nice to also know the work that was done prior to this, which led from not going forward with this project and then looking at the Huneing building instead. So now we're back with the South Platte Crossing again. So please be considerate of what you're being asked to purchase because I think when we had the opportunity, the city had the opportunity to buy that from them or negotiate, be part of buying the floor, we had better negotiating power then than we do now. So that's all I had for that. Thank you.
Members of the public, we're also able to submit comments online and by mail. Written comments received were incorporated into the updated agenda packet. If anyone wishes to speak at future council meetings, please check the meeting agenda and the city website for information on how to register or submit written comments. Next on the agenda are presentations. First up is an update on the city's response to COVID-19 crisis. Will the city clerk please introduce members from Tri-County Health Department to provide an overview of the county's mask order?
Mayor Hughesman and members of the city council. Tonight, we have Kayla Lesperance, the Tri-County Health Department's Public Health Industrial Hygienist to provide an update on the facial coverings order. Kayla, you are now a presenter or a panelist, which means you can unmute your microphone and enable a webcam if you have one and you're comfortable doing so.
Hello, everyone. So as far as my presentation, do you have it or would you like me to share my screen?
You should be able to share your screen now, Kayla. Thank you.
Okay, let me pull it back. Sorry, it is taking a moment. I don't know how to get out of the presentation back into Zoom. Okay, here we go. Wonderful. Okay, folks, can you all see my presentation?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Kayla.
Sure thing. All right, folks, so this is about the spread of COVID and the use of these coverings and the new mandates that have come out this past month. So I just want to introduce myself. I've worked for Tri-County Health Department as the Public Health Industrial Hygienist. I work in indoor air quality, response to elevated blood levels in children, radon, and now the response to COVID-19 and the pandemic. I sit as a safety officer in the ICS structured response to the pandemic. So I've been activated since March, since the beginning of it, and been going through the roller coaster ride that is COVID with all of you. So what are the current COVID-19 cases, deaths, and hospital bed numbers? I'm going to go through those real quick. So the new public health order, the safer-at-home order goes through some kind of standard metrics that puts counties in categories of risk. So Adams County, Rappahoe County, Douglas County are our counties, Tri-County Health Department. Adams County for the 14-day incidence of COVID is 134 over 100,000. So that's considered a very high level. And at that time, it means that the counties are not eligible for any new variances and other variances could be put on hold. So not only are the rising rates creating risk for illness, hospitalizations, and death and reduced business opening, they are contributing to jeopardizing possible reopening of schools in the fall. So pretty high there. The weekly infection rates, as we can see right here, we have seen decreases until June 13th and then increasing rates, rates beginning in, on June 21st because of processing delays. The most recent rates on this graph may increase or decrease as case investigations are completed. So people call into the health department or we call them and try to figure out where they might have gotten COVID and then say, oh, is it COVID? Is it not COVID? So we go through all the hoops there and then add them to the, to the count, to the numbers. So this is, as of Sunday, July 19th, there was 5,120 cases in Adams County. Looking at seven-day rolling average of total cases, smoothes out the Epi curve here. So you can kind of see that it's, it smoothes it out a little bit. You see the decline in cases during early June and the gradual increase of cases again, beginning in mid-June and continuing into July. And those were because of the public health orders that were instated. So here's the curve of the daily, daily cases in Commerce City. You can see the similar dip in June with a few spikes and the increase again in late June and in July. Okay, so this is hospital data, date of admission, and this is by county. So this is going to be Adams County's data for hospital admission. Hospital admissions begin to show an uptick in the first week of July, about three weeks after cases, cases begin to increase. And this is unclear if it will happen again. Known increases in deaths, however, which is great, but deaths usually do. deaths usually do lag cases by by even longer because of the the nature of COVID and how long it actually takes someone to succumb to the illness in the hospital. So here we have, in Commerce City, we see a slowdown in hospitalizations in early June and July, but two in the past weeks on July thirteenth and fifteenth. And then here we have the fourteen day positive rolling average. The average is about ten percent of cases come back as positive when they do get COVID testing. Um, so the testing positivity rate in Commerce City has hovered near ten percent and it increased it, it increased to twelve point first percent on July sixth. So um, it's hovering at about ten percent of cases actually have COVID or the test saved. So so the testing goal per for for the city is fifteen per ten thousand people. And Commerce City has met that goal once on June thirtieth, when ninety-two people were tested and testing has increased over time. So it is increasing over time and the goal of is fifteen per ten thousand cases and tests. So testing in Adams County has been increasing toward the goal and which explains some of the increases in cases. However, testing, test positivity also has been increasing, which indicates increased transmission and is about double the level a month ago. So that's great. Uh, but you do see the same percent positive cases in each test. So it does contribute a little bit, but not quite that much. So we're just gonna go through some of what we're seeing through the country. How are we doing in Colorado? So this is just deaths. Um, and the United States saw five thousand new deaths over the past week. So that's a forty-six percent increase over the US and here in Colorado, we saw a sixty-six percent increase from the week before and um oh, so it it's going up, it's going up, and it's changing weekly, but those percentages are pretty steep. And then, of course, you see Texas succumbing to first data. So this wasn't the, this isn't the last week's data. This is the week before that. So I would guess that there was another percent increase for all these places. So this slide indicates the Adams County mask usage. We've been looking at that as Tri County throughout the whole pandemic. So in April, we started doing mass studies where we have our environmental health specialists go out to stores and they just count people. They say how many people are wearing masks in this county. And um, so it was pretty good in April, and it's been steadily going down over the course of the pandemic. So less and less people are wearing masks. What helped minimize spread the first time? Of course, we saw the public health orders, the stay-at-home orders, the safer-at-home order, but then just the basic infectious disease guidance, wash your hands, cover your coughs and sneezes, and stay six feet apart. Those seem to make, along with the stay-at-home order, we kind of are hoping that everyone really is adopts the infectious disease control guidance that we've been giving and asking people to practice. Um, the face covering is part of your coughs and sneezes guidance. So um, sometimes people aren't very good at that. And so adding a face covering to the face will just remind them, but also not let aerosols out. So the face covering was recommended because of the asymptomatic and presymptomatic transmission, which was found um by the CDC in April twenty twenty. So it was super confusing. I am my, I myself was confused because they rolled back the recommendation that non medical, that medical mask shouldn't symptomatic, pre-symptomatic transition. Um, it it was a recommendation at that point. So how is COVID nineteen transmitted? This is, this is what my meat and potatoes consists of. I really like air quality sciences. And so aerosol respiratory sciences, the the droplets are what we're worried about here. So coughs go about ten meters per second, and they go about two meters out. That's six feet when people are coughing. And um, so you can see where the cone shows a large spray droplet and where they kind of fall and then the aerosols um, which will, they'll hover in the air. So this is somebody not wearing a face covering, just coughing or sneezing, wherever, not using a tissue. We're not covering them out. Um, as you can see, the droplets, they they go pretty far, but a lot of the droplets do drop to the floor before the six foot of distance. So that's why that's mandated and some something that's a standard is that the the droplets will drop out of the air because of natural gravity. So what does a face covering do? As we've been talking about, it'll stop the large respiratory particles which carry the most virus on them. But they're not perfect and they should be used in conjunction with social distancing and proper hand washing. So you can just see the cloth barrier there is keeping those droplets inside of the mask, that they're not spreading over that six feet of distance. So that's actually been pretty effective in the control of COVID nineteen. So another who's wearing the mask, as you saw, that fifty-eight percent of Adams County is wearing the mask. Um, so that's kind of on par with all of Colorado right now. It's about fifty-five percent, fifty-eight percent. So um, you're seeing almost always these these people wearing masks, but then what's good is you see that the frequently category is is up, so it's about eighty percent, and only a few people are not wearing masks at all. So it's, it was a pretty um low number there that Goldman Sachs had found in this study. And they were actually doing investment research and saying how much money will it save if we actually make a face covering mandate for the for the economy? So cloth masks in this Goldman Sachs study was, they're found to be working because you have a reference period um, where they actually have masks on. When they don't have them in the past six to ten days before they they do the mask mandates, their cases are really high. I'm sorry, not really high, but just they're they're higher than when you actually do mandate the masks. So um, confirmed cases is on the top here in this graph, and then fatalities is on the bottom. But fatalities uh, dropped quite a bit of percent. Controlling the transmission of COVID. Um, throughout the US, every state has somewhat of a mandatory mask mandate enforced. So every state is doing something. It's whether it's employees or patrons have to wear it in certain businesses or employees in certain critical businesses or um, maybe something more complicated, but every state has it right now because we're seeing such a jump in cases and um, it's it's really putting a toll on local economies. Things are getting shut down again, and we just don't want that to happen. We don't want to shut down business. That's that's not something we do if if mask coverings um, could make any toll in the the economic downfall, then I I think it's a really just speaks for itself. Um, some complaints we get about masks at the health department all the time. Um, this is kind of what I spend my day kind of hearing and uh, listening to and and trying to be as helpful as possible with getting misinformation out, out of the the public persona. So wearing a face mask causes low oxygen levels in the user. Homemade fast face mask shouldn't block oxygen. Oxygen's a gas. It'll diffuse naturally through any cloth barrier. Um, you do see that they're harder to breathe in because of the pressure that they put over the wearer and the amount of force it actually takes to draw a breath in is greater. So you're gonna have people, if they're not all the way healthy or have something wrong, they're gonna feel like they can't breathe. They're gonna feel um, like it's constricting their their air zone there. And and ninety-fives do the exact same thing to the wearer. It's not uncommon to see, and that's why uh, per OSHA standards, I used to work for OSHA, but per OSHA standards, you have to medically clear anybody who's given an N ninety-five by law because they do pose um, that that increased pressure of breathing. So they're harder to breathe in. Uh, wearing a homemade mask causes lung infections, like pleurisy, and they're hurting us more than they're helping us. I get this a lot. And it it makes me really, it it makes me feel bad for the public. But definitely doing those common hygiene practices with your mask are gonna alleviate that concern. You should be washing and drying your mask every day. Um, it's just like any type of clothing you put on your body, you're gonna wash it before you wear it again. Um, and this one's even more important because it's over your breathing zone, and you do have sensitive lung tissues. So um, any kind of mildew or bacteria that will get in the mask throughout the day, you should always wash it afterwards, and then it should not be a problem after that point. Um, I hear the virus is too small. It'll go right through a mask. Um, viruses are small, but they are traveling on bigger particles. So particles that are mostly made out of water, so water droplet, they will naturally just attract to each other. That's just one of the basic components of water and um, how it sustains life on Earth is that water naturally attracts to itself. So if you're wearing a mask and um, droplets are getting into the mask, that's what's stopping the COVID virus. Those that virus will hitch a ride on that particle, and that's how they travel. They don't fly through the air. Um, common complaints about masks again, so wearing a homemade mask causing carbon dioxide poisoning. I've seen that in people who wear N ninety-fives, and that's because it does have a seal around the edge of it, and um, it doesn't exhaust the carbon dioxide enough, or the person is not able to breathe um, well enough to exhaust all of their carbon dioxide in their actual lungs when they're breathing out. You know, we breathe out CO2 and water when we actually respirate. So um, you can see that in the N ninety-five wearers. So those ones who are vet tested and by law have to wear an N ninety-five, but with the cloth-based mask, they're so leaky that they shouldn't be causing that hazard at all. Um, and if they, i- i- if somebody's wearing a mask and it, they feel like they can't breathe in it, I'd just suggest to change the um, type of mask you're wearing. Maybe that's just a little too thick for you. Maybe that's just um, something that's hindering your breathing. Or are you, there could be some issues going on with your health and and your lungs. Maybe you should go to the the doctor if that were, if that were you in that case, that you should go get yourself checked out because it shouldn't really be be that hard to breathe in. So TCH made a mandate um, before the state put their face covering mandate out on, and I just want you to know that we are rewriting the mandate that um, and we are redoing some things to be more consistent with the state mandate. So um, our mandate, for instance, says kids who are six and older have to wear masks, while the state's mandate that came out is kids over ten have to wear the mask. So little things like that are getting um, re-discussed and then edited. And our orders, our public health order is for ninety days, however, and the state's is for thirty days. So it just extends a little bit longer in our um jurisdictions, but I would not be surprised if the governor did extend that, that uh, public health order, which is not surprised at all. Um, enforcement of the mandate, our tactics on enforcing this mandate is really to seek voluntary compliance through education, technical assistance. We just want people to understand what's going on in the environment right now and then just really try to educate and seek voluntary compliance. We don't want to make anyone do anything. We don't want to get authorities involved. Um, we, the only way that the authorities are gonna get involved with mask mandating is if the person was doing something else unlawful, committing a crime while not wearing a face mask could be um, you know, something that could tuck onto the 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 report there, but uh, we're not seeking anybody um, to be um, really it it's it's not something that we are gonna enforce like that. So this is a great slide for a lot of information too with our uh, local governments and um, enforcement standards. So we have our Environmental Health Director Brian Havichak, his phone number's on here, and then our Policy Manager Melissa Sager. Um, if you have any questions, what's so all about masking or enforcement, public health orders, anything like that, you can contact with them. You can contact me. Basically, you call anybody at Tri County Health Department, our five hundred employees, and they'll be able to get you to the right person. Um, we all have been activated and all of us are dealing with this on a daily basis. So during this whole COVID um, pandemic, our jobs basically get taken away from us, and then they they have us work on the the response. So we have a lot of, we have a lot of manpower. Um, and we would just suggest, you know, to focus on education and voluntary compliance with other orders too. And people, it's a very political thing right now, the masks are, but there's no reason to um really have that big of a a deal around masking. I mean, it's just a, we should just try to educate and be more involved with with the conversation there. Um, but that's, that's my presentation, and I'm wondering if anybody has any questions at all.
Does anyone on council have any questions? Councilwoman Grimes?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Kayla. Uh, very helpful to to hear that. Um, just have a couple of questions as follow-up to some of the things you mentioned. Um, just curious, most of the focus around wearing masks is to stop droplets and aerosols. So just curious uh, what their effectiveness is regarding uh, asymptomatic carriers uh, and why we would ask asymptomatic carriers to wear a mask.
Mm-hmm. So um, you're asking for numbers, how many particles are actually blocked when they're wearing the mask? So just from droplet theory, if you look at masking in general, even if there's no virus, we just count the particles, the aerosols. Um, they're really effective at stopping those aerosols come through the mask at all. So about eighty, eighty-five percent effective, eighty to eighty-five percent. Um, now they offer a little bit of protection from those aerosols as well, and we don't, we don't say it's a, it's a catch-all. It's gonna a hundred percent protect you, but it offers about fifty percent protection from aerosols, droplets, and particulates in the air. So it's doing something, even if it's not a hundred percent. Uh, but yeah, they're they're pretty effective in blocking any of the the particles and aerosols. And even better if you're using a surgical mask. So um, those medical surgical masks that you can buy at the store, they just are made of these materials that are actually antimicrobial, and they're doing a really good job of of attracting those wallet, water molecules in the droplets. So they're even a little bit more effective. Uh, cotton, cotton t-shirts, that material's really effective at stopping droplets as well of going through the droplet. Um, so it's been studied in a few labs, and I I work with Colorado Department of Public Health, and um, they they saw that it really greatly did stop the the aerosols and the particulates when they were studying each two types of different material that people might use.
Thank you. And so um, you're referring also to um, just droplets from just breathing, not necessarily coughing, correct?
Okay. Um, coughing, laughing, talking loudly, singing, we are seeing actually does quite a bit of damage with droplets and aerosols. So, yeah.
Just curious why a tri county offered an option for for cities to opt out if they feel compelled um, that this is the right move for our residents to decrease cases, decrease deaths.
The opt-out option is definitely based on metrics, so it's gonna be based on incidence of cases. So if they have a really low incidence and they're not seeing an uptick in cases, we can say, okay, well, you can opt out of it if these other protections are met. So um, that's why is that they do have a number they have to meet. And so far, unfortunately, none of our counties are at that threshold where we would be able to give them a variance for um masking at this moment because it's just, it's pretty high risk right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Noble?
Hi, thank you very much for your presentation. I have a few questions uh, for you. Um, do you know if Commerce City has free testing for COVID nineteen?
So as far as government side, I don't believe so, but there are a lot of um, clinics, like Salute Family Clinic is giving free testing and um, so maybe not specifically in Commerce City, but definitely neighboring areas. Um, Denver Department of Public Health has set up a lot of free testing, so that's something that cities um, can look at doing if if they see fit. But um, so far, mostly just our our private clinics have been doing some free testing, and they only do it on certain days. But um, nothing Commerce City specific. I do know you do have a Salute Family Clinic there that offers free testing.
A a resident asked if there was a list of hospitals and other fac- A, a resident asked if there was a list of hospitals and other facilities that report to CBHE. Do you know if that is public and how this person might obtain it?
Um, so it's a, when something's deemed reportable, it will automatically go from the lab to the CBHE. So it's, none of the cases should be physically reported by anybody. So when it's in the lab, it says it's reportable, it's automatically gonna get sent to the CBHE. And that's in a lot of, if reportable diseases like lead poisoning, for instance, I work with lead poisoning and nobody has to report it. They don't technically have to call or email or tell anybody they have this elevated blood level. It just gets sent from the lab because it's, it's deemed reportable, so. But um, I'll look more into that for you and definitely get you um, a list if there is one. But I don't think there is. It's just a reportable disease.
And other um, residents have um, complained about communication. It's in Spanish. So uh, we have uh, you know, fifty percent of Latinx community. Now, I wouldn't say everybody is Spanish speaking only, but there was a complaint that it, this information is not reaching residents who are Spanish speaking. And I don't believe that the Tri County website um, has translation.
Yeah, so we definitely, there's always a barrier when it comes to different languages of any sorts. And we definitely see that as being um, a really concerning. So we try to get things translated as much as possible. We do have contracts with translators and, and such. But I will definitely look into that situation and uh, make sure that what we have is translated and um, up on our website.
And my final comment is that I am concerned that uh, Tri County is now making its message that this is entirely voluntary, the mask requirement. So it's not a requirement, it's just, I don't know what, what it is. You're not doing a mandate, you're doing a voluntary educate, please do this. And I'm not sure that that really captures the zeitgeist of our community right now. And I would like to um, uh, point out that one of my colleagues did a next door poll. Now granted, that is not a scientific poll, but four hundred and forty-four people had responded on the poll. And of those four hundred and forty-four people, seventy-two percent said we should not opt out of what they saw as a mask mandate. That's how it was described to them. And twenty percent said we should opt out. I think it's really important that we convey the message that if we're going to get a handle on COVID, we all need to work together on this. And it is very serious business. It is not something that should be relaxed. I have plenty of friends who have been cooped up for three months now. They haven't been able to do much of anything because they're not in an environment where people are actually trying to adhere to any of the guidances that are coming up, whether it's six feet or hand washing. We've gotten rid of the opposite aisles. People aren't wearing um, masks oftentimes. As you pointed out, it's only fifty-eight percent. So I'm not sure that Tri County Health Department is sending a good message when you're suggesting that this is voluntary. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tri County Health? Seeing none, thank you ma'am for your time this evening. Thank you for the presentation and the information that you provided to us. It's very useful.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to invite interim city manager Roger Tinklenberg to provide an update on the city's overall response to the COVID nineteen crisis.
Thank you, Mayor. Good news. Excuse me. Good evening. Uh, wanted to give you a quick overview. Staff continues to operate under the twenty twenty budget reductions. And uh, as pointed out in the previous presentation, cases continue to occur both in Commerce City and in Adams County. July fourteen, you saw in the presentation, there were six cases. So far since March, there have been twenty-three deaths in Commerce City from COVID nineteen. Um, we continue to wear masks in the facilities and uh, require was mask-wearing by the visitors to the facilities. In addition, uh, the Department of Local Affairs, Division of Housing has launched a property owner preservation program uh, to allocate up to twenty million dollars in Federal Cares Act funds for rental assistance. To lend behalf of their tenants, so people can apply for that program uh, in order to cover their rent. Um, also uh, stamp that continue to uh, advertise positions that were frozen under the reduction to our budget. All those positions that were shown to be frozen until August first are now being advertised for recruiting. Um, also uh, in terms of our reopening plan, we're, we are staying at the level two of our reopening plan. Our emphasis uh, continues to be on maintaining safety for the public and uh, city employees while we maintain services. I'll turn it over to city attorney, Robert Sheasley.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, my internet connection may be a little bit spotty, so if I disconnect, I'll call back in. I just wanted to touch briefly on the governor's executive order regarding face coverings that was uh, discussed by the Tri County Health Department representative. Um, and to note that the requirement to wear masks in city facilities is the subject of a separate executive order um, that pre-existed the face covering order. So the governor required that everyone in public buildings wear face coverings um, to enter and move about the building. So that is something that the city imposed initially, but uh, is now compliant with the governor's order. As was noted earlier, Tri County's order is going to be revised, uh, but to be more consistent with the governor's orders, but will be longer. It is effective for ninety days as opposed to thirty days. The governor may extend his order as well, depending on the situation. Um, and then one of the major differences that won't be reconciled is outdoor wearing of masks, which is required by Tri County order. Um, so just to touch briefly on the governor's mask order, um, which will apply even if a local community opts out of Tri County's order. Uh, it is a requirement that everyone wear a face covering while in entering or moving around in a public space, which is uh, pretty well easy to understand, but it's publicly or privately owned or operated place that individuals have the right to access. It's a place of work or it's a place providing services. Um, it doesn't mean a person's residence. It doesn't mean a hotel room or motel room or dorm room. Uh, it does not apply to people under the age of eleven, so ten years and under do not have to wear it under the governor's order. Tri County's is age five, but apparently they're revising that. Um, so when you're entering or moving about a public space, or if you're waiting for or using a transit option, whether it's a taxi, a bus, light rail or ride share. Uh, so that is the general application. However, there are a number of exceptions that I think get missed a lot uh, when people are considering the face covering mandate. Um, again, individuals ten years of age or younger, individuals who cannot medically tolerate a face covering, the language used by the governor's order. And then uh, there are a number of exceptions for certain activities during the performance of the activity. A person who is hearing impaired or disabled and needs to communicate or is commer- or if you're communicating with somebody who's hearing impaired, um, and you have to see a person's mouth to be able to communicate, face covering is not required. It's also not required, required while you are seated at a food service establishment. Bars are currently closed right now unless they're operating as a food service establishment. Uh, so that would apply there as well, I believe. Um, if you are exercising alone or with someone from your family and the face covering would interfere with your activity. Again, this is while indoors. Um, that's a difference from the uh, Tri County order as well. Another one is if you're receiving a personal service where you have to take off the face covering to receive that service, dental care, uh, receiving a shave, something like that. If you're entering a business and for safety purposes have to remove your face covering for identification, like entering a bank. Um, if you're engaged in public safety as a law enforcement or firefighter or emergency medical personnel. If you're an officiant at a religious service uh, indoors, you're not required to wear a face covering. Um, or if you're giving a speech for a broadcast or for an audience, you're not required to wear a face covering. As I mentioned, there's no opportunity for a local government or county to opt out of this order from the governor. Um, but if a county enters the uh, next phase of reopening called Protect Our Neighbors, they can choose to be exempt from that order as well. Um, a note on that, Adams County is very far away from being able to enter that phase. But containing um, viral spread, uh, possibly including a face covering requirement is a consideration that the state will have if they're deciding whether or not to allow a county to further open under that next stage of reopening. Um, one of the important components of the governor's face covering order is it requires that um, an owner or operator of a public indoor space not allow somebody to enter into um, that space and allows that person, allows the owner to deny entry and then uh, potentially contact the police if uh, someone refuses to comply, either refuses to leave the building, in which case that would be uh, a crime of trespassing. Um, there's a requirement of posting signs at businesses to ensure that everyone is aware of their um, obligations under the governor's order. And then the very last thing is the order considered, look, recommends that local governments consider suspending licenses such as business licenses or liquor licenses for entities that don't comply. Um, and we're taking that into account as we go forward here. Um, so I just wanted to provide those notes on the governor's mask mandate um, in light of the Tri County uh, mask order as well. Um, this will apply regardless of an opt-out decision. Um, and the Tri County order allows opt-out by this coming Thursday. Um, a community can opt back in at any time under that order as well. So I'm happy to provide um, answers to any questions on this now or later. Thank you.
Somebody have any questions for Mr. Sheasley at this time regarding what he briefed us about? Seeing none, I believe Chief Nichols is next.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, one quick update that I wanted to provide, I know Councilwoman Noble asked a question about testing in the community. Uh, Salute uh, Medical Center over at sixty-two, over on Quebec is offering free COVID nineteen testing to community members. Uh, they do so on Monday, Mondays, Thursdays and Fridays between eight and eleven. If weather is permitting, they do a drive-by in the parking lot. So uh, any community member is free to go by there during those dates and times and uh, they can get their COVID nineteen testing completed. Uh, from what we've seen, it takes about, depending upon how crowded it gets, it can take anywhere from thirty to forty-five minutes to get in and out. Uh, but those lines have certainly been getting shorter, uh, the more prolonged this gets. So just wanted to make that information available. And other than that, I don't have anything else to uh, provide. Uh, so I believe DCM Smith is next.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, start with community relations updates for you tonight on our COVID update. Uh, to let you and the community know, Tri County Health recently launched a website with specific data about Commerce City's COVID nineteen results, including the number of confirmed cases by neighborhood and age. The website URL is data dot TCHD dot org backslash COVID nineteen backslash Commerce City. The top social media post in the last two weeks has been the Quality Community Foundation's youth scholarship recipients with more than six thousand people, we mean that. Dylan Gibson has been appointed as the permanent city clerk. Congratulations, Dylan. Uh, we are working on the recruiting package for the vacant deputy city clerk position, which is Dylan's former job. Uh, the clerk's office has received twenty-two new business license applications and has had thirty-two core requests. Those were all since July sixth. From a human resources standpoint, we have three hundred and sixty-three actual full-time employees, two hundred and forty-six variable hour, part-time seasonal, with thirty-seven vacant full-time positions. Uh, Roger mentioned recruitment specifically, I will tell you, we are screening applications for the IT service desk analyst, scheduling interviews for the chief building official, which will be held July twenty-third and twenty-fourth. The principal planner position has been posted and candidates are being reviewed. And finally, we're scheduling interviews for the recreation assistant for aquatics. Those interviews will take place July twentieth and twenty-first. Uh, the kazoo employee recognition platform I have mentioned previously will be launched across the organization on August first. Finance wanted to provide a Cares Act funding summary. The city's Cares Act funding allocation from the county is four point six million dollars. Total amount authorized by city council for programs for the community is one point seven five million dollars. Remaining funds are estimated to be at seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And the legal department is currently in the process of reviewing new guidance issued by the federal government about the use of Cares Act funding related to our COVID leave policy. In our last meeting, Mayor Hughesman requested the amount of funding remaining from nonprofit grant funding cycles previously run by Communications Division. Through two rounds of funding, the city has awarded one hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars of the two hundred thousand authorized by the city council. This leaves an unspent balance of seventy-three thousand and twenty-nine dollars. These remaining funds reside in the Cares Act balance. The council could leave it there for additional COVID-related expenditures or could consider directing staff to attempt a third round of nonprofit grants. In the event the council wishes to consider an additional round of funding for nonprofits, it would be important to know that eighteen thousand dollars of the committed funding from round two grants were awarded conditionally as the recipients had yet to expend all of their first round funding. Moving on to the tax division, there are eighty-six act, active audits in process. That's up from seventy-nine at our last report. And five audits have been postponed due to COVID nineteen. That's down from seven in our last report. In the IT department, a hundred new IT tickets have been opened in the last two weeks. And that brings our total to over fifteen hundred. The queueless mobile queuing and scheduling software is live in the courts, community development, tax, police and city clerk's office. Residents can go online and schedule an appointment to receive city services under the queueless tab on the city's webpage. We're currently implementing and testing the solution, the technical solution for hybrid city council meetings. We anticipate the technical side to be complete by the end of July. The city clerk is leading an internal process to develop procedures for so- specific implementation of hybrid council and other public meetings sometime in August. The municipal courts uh, continue to operate. We have extended six additional court dates for the operation of the municipal court as a result of the backlog of the docket that occurred during the closure. Some of those dates have already occurred. And that concludes my update. Thank you.
Mr. Tinklenberg, would you like to provide a wrap-up, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, community development uh, comprehensive plan, uh, there was a brief article about it attached to the city manager update uh, that was sent out back on uh, Thursday. So uh, reference that for your reading pleasure. Um, also uh, a number of the development projects that are reported on previously are continuing to move forward. That includes Legato, uh, Seventy-second in Colorado, sixty units of affordable housing, a hundred and fourth in Joliet uh, for industrial project and uh, Third Creek West. Also, the metro wastewater conditional use permit is going to Planning Commission on uh, August four. And then the uh, Sted School is uh, nearing approval for their PUD permit and PUD plat. Uh, the Bimbo Bakery. The Bimbo Bakery expansion is continuing on. Now, I'm not getting into the detail of any of that. Happy to share that if anyone wishes, but just wanted to give you a quick overview that things are moving along like they have been throughout the COVID-19 situation, so we've been able to keep up with projects. Although with a high number of development projects, some of the staff are starting to fall behind, and so we'll need to address that. So far this year, three hundred and four building permits have been processed. And then moving on to economic development. Again, just a reminder that the business support and recovery grants are going to be open for applications July twenty-two to twenty-seven. And then also, they held a virtual meeting for bar and event centers last Friday. Fifteen owners attended that session that was put on by Tri-County Health. And then also, business reopening guidelines. Tri-County Health has an overview of all of the health orders, COVID-19 news, business operating guidelines, and questions and answers. That is a recurring webinar that people can participate in. Those occur on Fridays from nine-thirty to ten-thirty in English, and in Spanish on Tuesday. It's from eleven o'clock to noon. So again, those are available to all businesses to participate. And then the Adams County reopens program has small business mini-grants also, and businesses can apply for those through the Commerce City Chamber of Commerce. And those are for businesses with fifty or less employees. And those are for business operations at up to two thousand five hundred. Technology upgrades for up to one thousand dollars or compliance issues up to one thousand dollars. And people can apply for one, two, or all three of those if those apply to them. Turning to Parks, Parks Recreation and Golf operations have seen a steady increase in reservations, but also guests can continue to comply with COVID-19 expectations in terms of general programs. In the fitness program, over two hundred people per week attend a virtual Zoom fitness class, so that's good. Helps people stay fit. Also, they have twenty personal training clients per week. And for active adults, they have a summer stroll through the parks. There's an average of six per session for that. And Tuesday night movie matinees, again, average of six people per session for that. Buffalo Run Golf Course so far, since April twenty-seventh, when it opened, reopened, fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty-eight rounds of golf have been played. Revenues are leveling off now. They've steadied at about the twenty-three thousand five hundred dollar mark two weeks ago. Last week it was twenty-four thousand seven hundred, so slight increase, but it looks like it's about reached its plateau. Public Works, just a couple things. Seventy-second Colorado, they're still waiting for Excel to energize the streetlights and install a meter. And then, you know, all of the other projects are progressing. I don't think I need to go into the detail on that. You received a capital project update for the month of June just recently. So unless there's any questions, that will wrap it up for our COVID-19 update. Thank you much.
Any questions for staff at this time? Seeing no requests for questions, we'll move on in the agenda. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They're presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there is one item listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove this item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing no request to remove that item, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Mayor Pro Tim?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilman Hearst?
All second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the item? Seeing no discussion, I'll ask the city clerk to read the title and take a roll call vote.
Resolution twenty twenty dash five one, resolution authorizing city manager to sign aircraft activity covenant for city-owned property located at northeast corner of East Eighty-Eighth Avenue and Tower Road. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. There are no pulled consent agenda items, so we'll move on to the next item, which is public hearings. First public hearing is ordinance Z-six-nine-two-nine-eight-two-zero rezoning of the one thousand two, twelve thousand five hundred Eastern and Fourth Avenue block. Tonight's first public hearing is a zoning ordinance to rezone one twelve thousand five hundred Eastern and Fourth Avenue from Ag to C-three at the request of Vertical Bridge Development T-Mobile. I'd like to remind council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. Councilmembers are not to provide testimony if they wish to participate in the decision. To rely on facts developed in this hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in the land development code. This time, I will open the public hearing and invite staff to make the presentation.
Good evening, members of council. Mayor. Today, I will be present in KC-six-nine-two-nine-eight-twenty for Nativity Lutheran Church. Dylan, can you pull up the the presentation, please?
Yes, I will, and just let me know whenever you're ready for me to go to the next slide.
Go ahead. So of this case, I just would like to inform everyone that all information pertinent to notice and publication is in the record. Next slide, please. The subject property is located at twelve five hundred East Hundred and Fourth Avenue, and it has four point nine-nine acres. It was properly annexed to Commerce City in nineteen ninety-six, and it currently has an agricultural sonny. The current use for this site is a church, and it was granted by use by permit through case eight dash one four zero three dash nine eight. The future land use for this site, it's mixed-use. Next slide. So as you can see, this particular property is surrounded by residential, commercial, as well as utility and additional residential on the rear of the property. Next slide, please. Here's the aerial view of the site. As I mentioned before, this site is currently used as a church. Next slide, please. Here's a current site of a current photo of the site. Next slide, please. At this time, the applicant is requesting a zone change from agricultural to C-three regional commercial district. This request will bring the existing use into compliance with their current development code standards, as well as allow the property owner to expand its footprints in accordance with LDC commercial standards. If approved, the property owner intends to lease a part of their property, which will be approximately nine hundred square feet, to construct a new concealed telecommunications tower in the rear of the property. This will require an additional approval from the Board of Adjustments. Next slide, please. The proposed development will be a bell tower, and it will be placed in the rear of the property, as you can see in the rendering in front of you. And it will have architectural features that match those of the principal structure. Additionally, the proposed telecommunications facility will have a minimum setback of a hundred feet from every property line in order to not disturb adjacent properties. Next slide, please. As part of the planning commission analysis, it has been determined that the site meets all C-three design and bulk standards. Additionally, the C-three is an appropriate sound classification due to its arterial location and proposed improvements. The applicant intends to invest in improvements for the property. However, the agricultural sound currently limits the types of upgrades available for this property. I build an expansion to include the concealed towers currently not allowed on their agricultural sonny. Additionally, this, it was it was determined that the site meets all approved criteria for the zone change. Next slide, please. It is consistent with the policies and goals of the city comprehensive plan. It is compatible with the surrounding uses. It is adequately served by utility amenities and serves in balance to use in the surrounding area, and it excuse me, and it provides a public entrance and change of zone too much to use. Next slide, please. As required in resolution twenty thirty, twenty twenty dash thirty, the meeting may be conducted electronically and advanced registration for testifying is required. Nineteen properties, property owners were notified of this potential change. I noticed was posted in the Denver Post, and there were also two signs posted in front of the property in regards to this public hearing. Next slide, please. As of July twentieth, staff has received no comments, questions, or objections to this proposal. Next slide, please. On July first, twenty twenty, Planning Commission voted five to zero to forward this request to city council for approval. Next slide, please. At this time, this completes my presentation, but I am available to answer any questions. Additionally, the applicant is also present to speak on behalf of this request, and he may answer any questions that the city council might have at this time. Thank you.
Is anyone on council have questions for staff at this time? Councilwoman Noble?
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Yes, I have a couple of questions. Do we have height standards?
Yes, we do have. For agricultural, I believe the maximum, I I, it is thirty feet. For commercial, it will be fifty feet, which is what the applicant is looking for. Additionally, with the Board of Adjustment approval, they will also require an additional fifteen feet in order to make the the proposed tower sixty-five feet in height.
That's what, that's what I thought I read. So sixty-five feet, that's around would you say that's six stories tall?
It's twelve feet per per floor, so it will be
Five stories, then.
About five stories, yes.
Simple math. That's all I can do. Don't ask me to do anything else. Okay, so that's five stories tall
Yes.
Across the street from Turnberry Neighborhood.
Yes.
And adjacent to the new reunion ridge.
Yes.
And there among the property owners that you would have notified. So if you go east, west, and south of the tower, there, there's nobody living there within three hundred feet. They are only north. So it would be, was it the residence along Hundred and Fourth? Did it extend beyond? How many blocks in did you go into Turnberry to ask about this?
I, so our range is about correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's between three hundred and five hundred fit radius that we provide notices to property owners, Councilmember.
Right. Yeah, so I just wondered how far that reached into the nineteen homeowners.
I do not have, I do not have that information, but I can
Property owners, yeah. So probably would have been three, maybe two property owners on the south side of Hundred and Fourth, and then the balance of them on the north side of Hundred and Fourth. I am, I am now granted, there are electrical towers that run through there, which are ginormous also. They're probably they may be sixty-five feet too.
They're tall, fifty-five feet.
And this is to look like a bell tower.
That is correct.
I don't see, when I look through the materials, any of the materials, a drawing of what this will look like.
That is correct, because at this time, we are only responding to the request for a zone change. We are not we, we have not completed the process for the development of the tower.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sheasley?
Thank you. I believe Mr. Marin clarified it, but I just wanted to note, the the specific use in question is not being considered by council tonight. I just wondered if anybody was confused. The Board of Adjustment will be addressing that separate application if a zone change is approved in the future. And so this, this, but I think it's important to note that any of the potential uses that could be allowed under a C-three zone district would be allowed on this property if the zone change would be approved, and so that's really what council's looking at. But of course, the concern of those potential uses is appropriate for council to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheasley. Any other questions for staff at this time? Councilwoman Noble?
Then what would be the other uses under C-three?
It's mostly commercial, councilmember. However, the property owner intends to remain on-site as they provide an additional benefit to the, to the community being a place of worship. The primary reason for the zone change is to meet the standards that are currently in our land development code.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? This time, I would like to invite the applicant to speak and ask if anyone on council has questions for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, my name is Mike Beannick. I'm with a company called LCC Telecom Services. We represent a company called Vertical Bridge and Nativity Lutheran Church. And as was mentioned, we are proposing to do a wireless telecommunications facility that will be, will look like a bell tower. It basically is proposed to be a three-sided bell tower, three-legged with planks that cover the antennas along the side. And on those, those boards, it will also have a cross on it to make it look to blend in with the church. Mr. Marin may correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the, the C-three designation is important to the church, not only for this reason, but also because as it is currently situated in the agricultural district, they are illegal non-conforming use.
That's correct.
Okay. And also, we looked at the comprehensive plan when we were working with this, and this area does call for commercial in the area as well, so we are in conformity with the comprehensive plan as well. And as was mentioned, we would have to go before the Board of Adjustments for the height exception if the zone change is approved. And we will also be required to have a neighborhood meeting with the, the neighbors, all property owners within five hundred feet. In addition to hosting that neighborhood meeting via Zoom, what we are also going to do is provide all the materials showing what the site plan is, and we also have photo simulations that show what the bell tower would look like that would be also placed in in our Dropbox for the residents to see, as well as any of the commissioner members, of course. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Anyone have questions? Does anyone on council have questions for the applicant? Seeing no questions, I'll ask the clerk to recognize Steve Douglas, who registered to speak on this matter.
Mr. Douglas, you should be allowed to unmute yourself and give your comment.
Uh, yes.
My comment and, and, and well, had a question, but, I'm off for anything that's going to deal with bringing our transmission as far as cell, transmitting, because our certain areas on the corridor of, um, Highway Two are poor. There's a lot of drops and calls. And hopefully, with this installation, this is only zoning, but the installation of this tower, if this would help with transmission as far as people using their cell phones or any other kind of, um, transmission. Uh, and the other question is, is this a five G, um, transmission tower? That's all I have.
Thank you for that. Mr. Beannick, would you like to respond in the question of is this a five G cellphone tower and what it will do to improve cellphone reception in the northern range of Commerce City?
I certainly can. Um, five G is a type of technology. It's not necessarily that the tower is built specifically for five G LTE or whatever type of technology. That is totally up to the carrier if and when they go on the, the tower. The proposed tower right now is being built for T-Mobile. Um, and I do not believe, um, at the onset, they are proposing five G. But again, that is certainly something that could be in the future. As far as the coverage goes, um, this location was selected as an area where the coverage would be, would be, uh, fulfilled by putting the tower at this location. And, and one of the things to the height at sixty-five feet, that's essential in order for T-Mobile to provide their coverage because especially in an area like Commerce City where you have hilly terrain, um, a lot of mature vegetation, those tend to block the signal. So you have to get some height to them. Um, and that, that's where the, the sixty-five feet came, came into play.
Thank you. Uh, one last time from council. Are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing then, Mr. City Clerk, were there any written comments submitted on this matter?
Mayor Hughesman, no written comments were received by the deadline for this case.
Thank you very much. This time, I'll close the public hearing. This time, I'm looking for a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission in case Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero. Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission in case Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero.
Thank you, Councilmember Madera.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission in case Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Mayor Hughesman, may I read the title of the ordinance?
Um, I'm not there yet right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission.
You're correct. My apologies. Uh, Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. This time, I'm looking for a motion and a second to enter a finding that the requested zoning for the subject property contained in case Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero meets the criteria of the land development code. And based upon such finding, introduce and approve ordinance Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero on first reading by council as seated. Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, I, motion to enter a finding that the requested zoning for the subject property contained in case Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero meets the criteria of the land development code. And based upon such finding, introduce and approve ordinance Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero on first reading by council as seated.
Councilmember Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter a finding that the requested zoning for the subject property contained in case Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero meets the criteria of land development code. And based upon such finding, introduce and approve ordinance Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero on first reading by council as seated. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll ask the city clerk to read the title of the zoning ordinance and take a roll call vote.
Ordinance Z dash six nine two dash nine eight dash two zero and ordinance amending ordinance Z dash six nine two dash nine eight to rezone four point nine nine acres from A.G. Agricultural to C-three Regional Commercial District for the property located approximately one two five zero zero east one hundred and fourth avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning. Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Mayor Hughesman, I believe you're muted.
I am. Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, next on the agenda is conditional use permit one two four dash two zero stadium auto parts. Tonight's second public hearing is a conditional use permit to allow the development of salvage yard at nine seven five zero east ninety-sixth avenue with the request of stadium auto parts. Remind council once again to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. Council members are not to provide testimony if you wish to participate in the decision. To rely only on facts developed in this hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in the land development code. This time, I will open the public hearing and invite staff to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Dylan, you can go ahead and, uh, show my next presentation, please. Thank you. Council members, mayor, today I will be presenting to you KCU dash one two four dash twenty for a conditional use permit for stadium auto parts. Next slide, please. Before I begin, I just would like to say that due to technical difficulty issues on our city attorney's office, the presentation that I had ready for you this afternoon was, uh, erroneously deleted. And therefore, tonight, I will be using the presentation that was provided to planning commission. This presentation can be used because it was included through the PC minutes as part of this package. The property, uh, the property, uh, today, it's ninety-seven fifty, it's ninety-sixth Avenue. The property is about twenty-five point eighteen acres, and it was properly annexed into Commerce City, uh, in two thousand and seven. The current zoning of the property is I-three, and its current use is undeveloped. Uh, the future land use for this particular site, it's general industrial. Next slide, please. So the proposed site is located in an area developed and planned for general industrial purposes with properties on the northwest and south designated for high intensity industrial uses, and it's currently some I-three. Next slide, please. At this time, the applicant, Stadium Auto Parts, is requesting the approval of a CUP in order to construct and operate an auto salvage yard. The proposed project will include thirty-one thousand square feet, building with office space vehicle, a dismantling area, a warehouse storage area, outdoor storage area for the placement of car shells in the rear of the property, as well as site improvements, uh, such as landscaping, fencing, detention ponds, and dust-free surfaces. The applicant Stadium Auto Parts was actually founded in nineteen forty-five, and it has over seventy years of business in the Denver metro area. There are currently two locations with one in Denver and one in Westminster. The main source of revenue for the business is the reselling of vehicle parts in person, as well as in the internet. Currently, Stadium Auto Parts employs nearly thirty employees. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the site is about twenty-five point eighteen acres. The applicant has also applied for a minor modification, reduction, uh, reducing the floor area by fifty percent as required per LDC landscape, uh, LDC guidelines. The proposed landscape area, it's about seven point three five acres, and it encompasses the entire perimeter, the detention pond, as well as the front yard land, front yard landscape. The outdoor area, it's supposed to be about fifteen acres with the proposed access along east ninety-sixth Avenue. Adequate parking will be provided for both employees and customers of the property. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial site of the, of the property. The site is mostly narrow with only one access along east ninety-sixth Avenue, and it runs north for about half a mile. Next slide, please. As you can see, there's, uh, no, not developed site on this property just yet. Uh, next slide, please. So the project is intended to be completed in two phases, with phase one encompassing the proposed building on the south end of the property, access roads, perimeter fencing, and outdoor storage, landscape and detention ponds depicted on the plan. Next slide, please. So the, the first two slides that you see in front of you, those will be, those will encompass, uh, phase one. Next slide, please. This will be the second phase. The second phase is like, expected to be completed two years after the opening of phase one. It will inclu- and it will include the rest of the outdoor storage, as well as remaining site improvements as shown in the development plan. Next slide, please. Here's some of the other, next slide, please. So the proposed mode of operations for the site will require trucks to access the site and drive salvage vehicles to the rear of the building, where vehicle pieces will be removed, cleaned, and stored for the resale in the warehouse. Car shells will then be, uh, moved to the outdoor storage area. Will there be line? Be placed in a dust, uh, dust-free, uh, surface approved by our, uh, public works department. After a hundred and forty days, car shells will be crushed on site and moved out of the property for the next step in the recycling process. Next slide, please. Although most of the daily operations will take place indoors, the applicant has proposed a robust landscape through. These improvements will also be performed in phases. Next slide, please. This will still encompass, uh, phase one. Next slide, please. Next slide. And as you can see, this will, in addition to a robust, uh, a robust landscape plan, the site also benefits from its proximity to the O'Brien Canal and its high embankments to create additional screening due to the topography of the site, as you can see in this rendering. Next slide, please. Moreover, as part of the requirements for the minor modification, the applicant has agreed to install a CMU wall with a metal security gate along the entrance to the site to further conceal the, the use from daily traffic. Next slide, please. As mentioned previously, the subject property is directly adjacent to the O'Brien Canal. And as part of the minor modification requirements for fire relief, the applicant has increased landscaping buffering by fifty percent along the canal. As part of the landscaping buffering, the applicant and Freiko have agreed on a landscape buffer that meets the need of both parties. Next slide, please. And the finished buffer will result in a twenty-five feet buffer as depicted in this rendering with those, uh, with those particular trees used, uh, for the landscape. Next slide, please. As an added benefit, the proposed landscape buffer will also provide a new city amenity in the form of increased urban canopy while also providing approved pairways, action plan guidelines for parks, trails, and open space. However, it's important to note that at this time, um, park and recreation has no set day for improvements on this particular part of the trail. Next slide, please. As part of the conditional use permit, the applicant held two neighborhood meetings, one on Wednesday, December fourth, and another one on May, March third, both were held at Bison Reach Recreation Center. Two adjacent property owners attended with their main concern stated that will attract more crime. However, no concerns or objections have been provided by the police department. Next slide, please. As far as for planning permission analysis, it has been determined that the proposed use is compliant with the comprehensive plan, as well as the development land, uh, the land development code. The site layout is appropriate for the use, because as I mentioned, it has limited visibility on, into the site due to the topography of the surrounding area. The majority of the proposed use will be performed indoors, and the applicant has proposed additional concealment opportunities in the form of landscaping, let, landscaping buffer ends along the east of the property and an enhanced entrance that will encompass ACA, CMU wall. Additionally, impact, impacted traffic conditions in the area are expected to be minimal as this proposed use estimates, uh, thirty-eight trips per day. Additionally, there are no objections from South Adams, uh, Fire Department or Commerce City Police Department. Next slide, please. The proposed use, uh, meets the approval criteria for a conditional use permit as it, as there's no substantial or undue adverse effect on adjacent property. Any adverse effect has been mitigated to the maximum extent possible. The characteristics of the site is suitable for the proposed use, as it is an I-three property. The property is, uh, adequately served and will not put undue burden on improvements, facilities, or services that, uh, there's adequate assurances of continued maintenance as the, uh, applicant has already purchased the land to remain on that, on that side for the long term. And there is no evidence, uh, that the use will violate federal, state, or local requirements. Next slide, please. So on July first, twenty twenty, the planning commission voted five to zero to recommend the approval to city council to three conditions. Condition eight states that this conditional use permit is for the storage and salvage of vehicles to include passenger cars, single axle trucks, one-ton trucks, vans, delivery vans, class C RVs, and small types of shuttle buses. All such vehicles not to exceed twenty, twenty-two feet in length. Uh, no other types of vehicles, including but limited to tractor-trailer semi-trucks, full-size buses, boats, heavy construction vehicles, or mobile homes as defined in the LDC are permitted. Condition eight, it's, uh, it specifies the type of use yearly reports detailing all complaint, all complaints from adjacent, uh, neighbors and how those complaints were addressed. Adjacent property owners will be, will also be able to submit complaints via neighborhood services if they so desire. On or after, um, August thirty of twenty twenty-five, if the yearly reports and reported violations indicate that the use is not compliant with the CUP approval criteria, the community development director may submit the CUP to planning commission and city council for review of those conditions. Next slide, please. As part of the required public notice, forty-nine property owners were notified. Uh, there was a note, uh, a notice put in the Denver Post, and there were two signs posted on the property. Additionally, all publication, notification met the requirements of resolution twenty twenty dash thirty to provide notice that the meeting may be conducted electronically, advanced registration for testifying as required. It's required and information for participator, participation is provided in the published agenda. Next slide, please. As of July twentieth, staff has received no, uh, has received one comment from a, an adjacent property owner. Next slide, please. At this time, planning commission and, uh, recommends that the city council approve, uh, this case and subject to the three conditions that I stated in this presentation. Next slide, please. This completes my presentation, but I am available to answer any questions that the council might have. Additionally, the applicant is also present to speak on behalf of this request and may answer any questions that the city might have. Thank you.
Any questions from council for staff regarding this conditional use permit? Councilwoman Grimes?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of questions. I didn't see included in uh any of the resource material that um there would be a irrigation plan required for all of the landscaping that's proposed. Can you speak to that briefly?
Yeah, as far as any uh proposed landscape plan, council member, there is a there is a plan for irrigation, however, it's not usually uh provided with uh with the development plans. But uh that could be something that I could provide to you outside of this.
Absolutely. Just want to make sure if they're gonna put in beautiful landscaping that it stays living. And then other question related to the reporting of complaints. Annually seems a bit long. If there are complaints coming in, it seems that it would be prudent to find out more frequently than that. Is there any flexibility on the amount of reporting?
Yes, as I mentioned, uh if if any adjacent property owners are not able to get their uh their concerns resolved, they are still able to go through our neighborhood services department who can still review any complaints and go to the site and inspect if that if that is the case. There there is no um there's no difference between the two. Part of the reason that can that that condition was said, it's because um the applicant feels strongly that they can address co- uh any comments from adjacent property owners, uh but as I mentioned, adjacent property owners can still go through the uh through our normal uh complaint uh process as well.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for staff? I do have one question. You mentioned there was objection received from one adjacent property owner. Can you give us a little more information regarding that as far as proximity to this property? Type of property of that adjacent property owner that is not um uh fully on board with this conditional use permit?
Yes, mayor. Um actually, uh the the property owner who provided that uh that comment was uh was not a part of the neighborhood meeting, but the uh the applicant actually reached out to him and provided him uh a presentation which you will see uh shortly here. And after that, it uh that property owner provided a a letter to her planning commission stating that uh they were after reviewing all the materials, they were okay with uh with the proposed project.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. This time would like to invite the applicant to speak.
Brian, can you let me know who I'm supposed to be unmuting for this case? I'm sorry, I lost my notes.
Oh, it's okay. Uh Mister Norman Wright.
I do not see Mister Norman Wright in the meeting currently, Brian.
Mark Delgado, perhaps?
I do see Mark. Mark, you've been promoted to panelist, which means you can unmute yourself and start your webcam if you have one and are comfortable doing so.
Thank you uh uh mayor and council for for hearing this case here tonight. I am gonna uh turn it over to the property owner and and the owner of Stadium Auto, Norman Wright. He has a short presentation to provide to you all. Um so I'll turn it over to Norman, who's sitting here with me.
Good. Thank you, Mark. And thank you, mayor and council members. Uh we are looking forward to becoming part of your community. Uh part of our search to find a location. We went throughout the metro area and this location was the perfect, we thought was the perfect location for the business. Uh because of the canal, it has an eight to ten foot bank. So people cannot see him. If you drive around the property, uh you cannot see him because of the other uses. It's mostly trailers. Uh the only part you can really see in is on Ninety six. And uh the building and landscaping is going to pretty much cover that up too. So uh we really look forward to becoming part of the community. And we feel that we'll be a a real good part of the community. So I thought I'd go over what Stadium Auto Parts' history and then what we're doing and some other pictures.
And uh Brian, if 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 you by chance had the uh the slideshow to to pull up during this part of the presentation.
Yes, uh Dylan, there should be a uh as part of the console packet, there was also an application. Thank you.
Yep, I have it now. So just let me know whenever you'd like me to proceed to the next slide, Mister Wright.
Thank you very much. Uh Stadium Auto Parts has been in business for seventy five years. And what we do, we're in auto recycling. We're taking vehicles and dismantling them for the usable parts and then we're recycling everything else on the vehicle. And we fill with a solution to the automotive waste stream because you don't see cars laying around anywhere in the cities anymore. Uh our industry is basically taking care. So next slide, please. This is our Denver location. We have four point two acres there. This is the building. We moved there in nineteen eighty and have successfully operated the auto recycling business there. Very involved with the community. I'm involved with the city council. Involved with our city council person, et cetera, et cetera. Next slide. This is our uh West Minster location. That was started nineteen seventy four. We're very active in the community in Westminster. And uh this location has been uh there since seventy four. Next slide. The company history, Stadium Auto Parts began in nineteen forty five, over seventy five years of success of operating in a Denver area. Hyman Wright, my father founded the company. And son Norman purchased the business in nineteen seventy one. It's a family run business and it's a small business. Norman is the past president of the International Automotive Recycler Association, the Colorado Auto Recycler Association. I'm also current chairman of the Government Affairs Committee for both associations. Really very, very much involved in the industry and the national and international industry. What are the three Rs of recycling? According to the EPA, you want to reduce, reuse and recycle. Auto recycling is in a reuse. What is a better way of recycling than to reuse a product rather than have to make a new one and use our ores and everything to try to do that? We believe reuse is the key to what auto recycling is all about. And that the community and our customers know that by reusing something, they save a lot of money. It's it's a product that's a original equipment product and it's tested. And we feel the reuse portion of recycling is the best form. Next slide, please. Okay. What makes Stadium Auto Parts different than most salvage yards? We purchase total loss vehicles from the insurance industry, reducing the severity of the loss. Like purchasing those cars in auctions, we're paying very close to thirty or forty percent A C G. That reduces the severity of the claim and that reduces everybody's insurance. We're saving consumers both lower premiums and alternative lower cost recycled parts. Parts have become an extremely expensive part of the repair process. We're offering an alternative of a recycle park with basically the same warranties as the O E. Parts sold with extended worries, including labor. We have warranties up to lifetime, including labor. We feel we have the best warranties in the industry. Parts are cleaned and tested. Each part is removed, inspected and cleaned. Computerized inventory includes barcode. We barcode all the cars in, all the parts. And we keep track of everything in our computerized system. We're nationally as as well as internationally known throughout the world. Stadium received the A R A beautification contest. We're a car member, which is a certified auto recyclers international association. We're a U R G nine thousand certification. We really maintain that we are the cleanest and best operation that you could do. And this is just an idea. I'm gonna show you next is how we're wrapping the parts. When we pull them off the car, we clean and rack the parts ready for our customers. Next slide. What makes Stadium special? We have the latest technology available in the industry. Parts removed and cleaned and wrapped for immediate sale. Over seventy five years in business with extensive customer base. We have over ten thousand customers in our database. Over eighty percent of the parts are sold as B and B, business to business. We're selling most of parts to garages, dealerships, collision shops. And the reason that this is the trend is happening more and more is the vehicles become a high tech vehicle. The average person can no longer work on the vehicle. So the consumer now is asking their shops to call us to save their money and use original equipment parts. Parts available on company website. We have an eBay store that's very successful and we have other search engines throughout the internet. Saving consumers money compared to new parts. Reducing insurance premiums with the use of lower cost recycled O E M parts used in their repairs. One of our biggest customers is the concern is the insurance industry who purchases our parts to repair the their their cars so that they can cut down the severity of the accident and keep insurance rates lower. Next slide, please. All parts are stored in specially designed racking systems. So this shows you how we're storing the parts that are removed. Next slide. Here's additional racks that uh you can see some are engines, transmissions, you know, all the parts are being stored. Next, please. Protecting our environment. All vehicles inspected upon arrival for any type of oil leakage. Vehicle dismantled inside the dismantling facility. Recycled parts removed for sale for reuse. All fluids are drained. Oils removed, stored and used in our waste oil heating systems, therefore the oil becomes a fuel. Antifreeze is processed and sold as recycled reuse. People reuse the antifreeze. Washer fluids are removed and sold for reuse. Gas and diesel fuels are reused for company vehicles. Freon is collected and sold for reuse. Batteries stored and sold for reuse aren't being recycled. Tires are sold for reuse or shipped for the recycling for recycling. The and all recycled parts are drained before they're put outside or in our ratches. Metals separated and sent out for recycling. All required licenses and permits issued include clean water, storm water permits. Very much concerned with our environment. We take as much as we can, any hazardous materials out of those vehicles and we find a way to reuse that fuel for some type of fuel. It's extremely important to us that we maintain the our our land we're on and make sure that we are recycling and not causing any damage to our environment. Next slide, please. These are the tanks we are using to store our fluids. It's a double wall tank. And we submitted those to the planning department and they approved them for our use. So everything is on a vacuum system and it's gonna be pulled out of the car while they're inside the bill. Next slide, please. Stadium Auto Parts' community involvement. We volunteer our business to the fire department and the first responders. They come in and they practice on our vehicles, their life saving devices. And both Denver and Westminster fire departments, I've talked to them and they're already contacting the South Adams Fire Department. And we'd be happy to uh to work with them and to provide our facility for their training. Local and state law enforcement training, uh the law enforcement comes in and does training on gym inspections. And we're always work with the law enforcement on as much as we as possible. Environment agencies for training, uh Department of Health, Colorado Department of Health brings their people in on storm water for training how to enforce the storm water laws. Schools and community groups, the education for tours. We bring kids through and show them uh their biggest surprise is seeing a car being crushed and seeing how we're handling the waste stream of the automobile. And we sponsor youth sporting teams and activities. Next slide, please. This was recently given to us in the uh in Westminster and showing you how they practice on the vehicles. And this award was given to us in December. Next slide, please. Why auto recycling? The best, first of all, it's the best form of recycling. It's reuse of things. Uh it's the oldest and largest recycling industry in the world. Eliminates our country's automotive waste. Provides alternative original equipment parts at substantial savings. Provides big paying jobs, pays taxes, makes a profit. It does not ask for any subs- sub- subsidiaries as most recycling operations in this country do this. We feel we're the best form of recycling. We don't need subsidies. All we need is to be there and handle those cars and serve the community. We probably pay near a hundred thousand a year in sales tax to both Denver and Westminster. We think we are a great, we know we're a great citizen of our communities. And we're really looking forward to serving the Palmer City community as we feel they we 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 really are what's good for our environment. Uh next slide, please. Basically, is Stadium Auto Parts is what auto recycling has evolved into. Uh we very much appreciate you, your consideration. We think, like I said, that we're gonna be part of your community and an asset to the community. Uh I'd be glad to answer any questions before Mark goes through some of the drawings.
Thank you, Norman. Um very, very quickly, uh you know, we worked uh collaboratively uh collaboratively with staff on this and I we thought it was important here to just have one exhibit that kind of identifies really all the landscape buffering that's going on, not just on the O'Brien Canal, but because of the configure, I'm sorry, if you could jump to the next slide, please. There's the overall, the the development plan's kind of chopped up into segments, but we wanted to kind of show the overall development here and really how how the screening is and and all the mitigation, the surrounding views coming into the site are being addressed. So you know, at the southern end there, you can see the building is really acting as a screening element along with the fencing and uh generous landscaping on Ninety six Avenue. On O'Brien Canal, we're exceeding the landscape requirements by fifty percent as as Mister Marin had had mentioned. We're also preserving a growth um on the north end uh that is is gonna kind of screen from the Havana side. And then on the west side, uh there's additional screening which that meets the planning uh land development code standards for retention ponds. So you're getting kind of, even though it's behind the property, there's some additional screening that should serve uh very long term uh benefits to the area. It it's hard to imagine, you know, these screening components ever ever not doing the job they're supposed to do and what we've been working with staff on on getting to. Next slide. And this is just a close up. You know, the as you saw on the slides, you know, this is a uh significant upgrade to their current facilities. And and I don't know that Norman mentioned it, but but it is the, from from what I understand, the intent here would be to consolidate eventually both the facilities to this single location. So this will essentially be the the central location for Stadium Auto in the future. I wanted to mention, we have uh if there are any questions from the design team, everyone's here to answer questions from the design and development team on Norman's side and uh I think from there we can open it up to any questions.
Michael, next slide.
Next slide, uh again. Again, this is, you know, looking at those existing buildings that have been there for a while. This slide really demonstrates the architectural intent. It's a site cast building with textured materials and articulation. New offices that will again be consolidated from the other facility as well as the warehousing. And then again, the dismantling piece that has the overhead doors is very strategically screened to the rear of the building. So not in sight from Ninety-Sixth Avenue there. And then there's one final rendering on the next slide. And so now, yes, we can open it up to questions. But these are a few architectural views of the facility from the approach from Ninety-Sixth Avenue. I think that concludes our presentation, and we would open it up to any questions.
Thank you. This time, are there any questions from counsel for the applicant? Counselwoman Noble?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Have you given consideration to, I really like the fact, of course, that it's recycling and reusing. And have you given consideration to using solar or anything for your electrical needs?
We have talked to a couple of people. And if we could get it arranged and put it in the building, we would probably look to that. I know we recycle a lot of the water too in our cleaning area. So anything that we could do that's financially feasible, we definitely have an open mind.
That would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant from counsel? Seeing none, we'd like the clerk to recognize the people, three individuals that have requested to speak on this matter. First is Wes Gardner.
Mr. Gardner, you should be able to unmute your microphone and provide your comment.
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm an adjacent landowner to the north and to the west of the property. And when the applicant, Mr. Wright, originally filed for application to develop his property, I reached out to him and asked him for a tour of his facility that he has in the Denver metro area. And Mr. Wright gave me a very in-depth tour of his operation. And I was very impressed with the recycling capabilities that he has. And so he asked me to speak tonight on his behalf because we do support this. This has been an interesting piece of property that lies between the O'Brien Canal and what used to be the Little Burlington Canal. And it's a very, you know, as you can see by the slides that were shown earlier, very interesting piece of property. It's difficult because of the way it lies between these two ditches. And it's down low. And the landscaping that exists in those tree groves to the north, plus the landscaping that staff has asked Mr. Wright to do, really conceals this quite well. And again, we spent a lot of time over the past twenty years developing property in this particular area. And we were always interested to see what this was going to be. Maybe we just had no idea how anybody would ever develop it. We certainly had no plans for it. And Mr. Wright has done a great job in the building that he's building up on Ninety-Sixth Avenue. And the screening and landscaping have met all of my expectations, excuse me, as a property owner in the area. And I've talked to several other property owners in the area. And they too agree that this is a really good fit. So we're excited to have Stadium Auto Part and Norman Wright as a neighbor.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Next up is Andrew Peters.
Andrew, you should be allowed to unmute yourself and provide your comment.
Oh, this is Andrew Peters. I don't have any comment. I'm just counsel for the applicant. He was here to get questions for me, so I don't have anything to say about this. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Steve Douglas.
Steve, you're unmuted, and you're able to provide your comment.
Okay, thank you. I had the opportunity during the zoning meeting to talk about just your planning. But then it got stopped because there wasn't proper notice. So I wasn't able to make comments during the July meeting, the follow-up one. So I'm glad this came to counsel now. You know, listening to the proposal and all that, it's like this is going to be a good project. Overall, and hoping that this could be a model for other businesses coming in wanting to do the same thing. Because Commerce City in the past has been a dumping ground for these types of businesses. A good example is over in the Irondale area where, you know, it's in the county and as far as restrictions and where they're a lot different in the county versus the city. But the question I had was on conditional use permit being five years. That could be three or four years. This is still up the process. And when the owner will be in good standing because our council's going to change hands. So, you know, that could be moved up or extended and at least won't be put in that window. So a three- to four-year window would be great for conditional use permit. And, you know, with these cars coming in, they're going to have forever chemicals in them. So I'm conscious about the environment, especially next to the O'Brien Canal. And so based on storage, and it's nice, and I'm going to have stacked vehicles there, the potential of leaking into the O'Brien Canal. And then the fifty percent increase in the landscape is great too. But because of the surrounding property and the exposure, it would be nice if this landscaping would be in not two phases. But if it's two phases, maybe a spring and fall, but not where it's a lasting one for one-year, two-year, or three-year window. Maybe that landscaping portions could be done sooner. Just so the roof looks really good. And I just want to know if this is going to be public or private when it comes to pulling the equipment and buying parts. If this is going to be, you know, like going to an auto place where people can just pull up the public request parts and go in. So what's the capacity for the parking lot? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson, were there any written comments submitted for this matter?
Mayor Hughesman, there was written, one written comment received that was incorporated into the updated agenda packet earlier today. It is listed as the attachment written comment on the updated packet.
Thank you. One last opportunity. Is there anyone in counsel who has any questions for either staff or the applicant regarding this case? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. This time, I'm looking for a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission in case CU-124-20. Mayor Pro Tem?
Motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission in case number CU-124-20.
Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission in case CU-124-20. I'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit in case CU-124-20, subject to the three conditions and findings recommended by the Planning Commission. Mayor Pro Tem?
Motion to approve the conditional use permit in case number CU-124-20, subject to the three conditions and findings recommended by the Planning Commission.
Councilman Hurst?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit in case CU-124-20, subject to the three conditions and findings recommended by the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tem?
Sorry, I just forgot to put my hand down.
Any other requests for discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, resolutions. We have two resolutions this evening. The first one is Resolution 2020-53, an intergovernmental agreement with RTD for public art at the North Metro Railroad Station. Would Deputy City Manager Troy Smith please make the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Tonight, we're going to talk about the public art recommendation at the RTD station. Counsel may remember, we brought previously in front of you an intergovernmental agreement that was signed by counsel and RTD related to this installation. Dylan, could you put the presentation up, please?
Yes, sir. Give me just one moment.
Thank you. And if you'll advance the slide to... Thank you, Dylan. Just a little bit on the background of this process. We established an art selection committee. Residents, cultural council representatives, local business representatives, RTD and city staff all represented on that public art selection committee. Three committee... Meetings were held from December of twenty nine... These are the three semifinalists that were selected. Next slide. And these are renderings of each of those three. Next slide, please. And the final slide, thank you, Dylan, arrives us at the recommendation of the Public Art Committee. Annette Coleman was commissioned to receive from the city for fifty-eight thousand dollars for the design, construction, and installation of her proposed artwork. As shown here in a roundabout where buses would turn around. The public art consultant of the cities would work with the artist to address maintenance concerns and supply lights and remove those. You go on to the next slide. It's important to note that this recommendation passed by five of the seven Public Art Committee members. And importantly, RTD did not approve of this piece of art because of concerns they had with respect to the ownership and the ongoing maintenance costs associated with this piece of art. The Public Art Committee's recommendation was presented to the Cultural Council for review and approved on July fourteenth. Next slide. Under the current IGA, that's the one that counsel approved on March second, RTD would own and maintain the station artwork. As a result of RTD's concerns with the piece of art selected, they have requested to change the IGA surrounding ownership, installation, and ongoing maintenance costs. In summary, the city council will need to amend the IGA to have the city own and maintain this artwork if the selected work is to be installed. Next slide. These are the bullet points of the requested changes to the IGA that RTD is making. Again, the city would own and maintain the art piece. And as a result of that, the city would be required to enter into a licensing agreement, which is separate from the IGA. And that would allow the city to enter the property and maintain the artworks. Additionally, RTD requires the artist to agree to an insurance limit in the amount of five million dollars pursuant to the licensing agreement. That seems significantly high to staff. We're not certain that the artist will be able to provide that amount of coverage. RTD has suggested that they would work with the artists if they were selected and could not meet the requirement. And the city would agree to cover the difference in the insurance and take on any risk associated beyond what coverage the artist may have and that five-million-dollar cap. It is very unlikely, though, that any losses would exceed that limit. As the property owner, RTD retains the right to remove or relocate the art piece for basically any reason solely determined by RTD. Next slide, please. So that leaves counsel with a few options here that we wanted to present to you this evening. One is counsel could agree to amend the IGA with the terms as outlined and install the art piece selected by the Public Art Committee and Cultural Council. Option two would be the city council could choose to not amend the IGA and return the issue to the Public Art Committee, who would have essentially three primary options. They could choose one of the other two semifinalists. They could choose really from any of the fifty-two that submitted, or they could start over with a new call for artwork. Those are the options and alternatives that are available for counsel this evening. Next slide, please. And I would be happy to answer any question that the counsel might have.
Anyone on counsel have questions for Mr. Smith regarding this? Councilwoman Noble?
Thank you very much. All lovely art. So I'm curious, though, there aren't very many specifics here. What are the anticipated annual maintenance costs of the selection of the two groups?
So we did request a number from the artist. And the best estimate we could come up with at this point in time is between five hundred and one thousand dollars per year as an estimated annual maintenance cost.
It looks like it could catch dirt and snow and stuff. Is, are there escape patches at the base of this art? It looks like a vessel.
I believe everything would drain down into the ground underneath of the piece of art, if I'm understanding your question correctly. And I believe part of the maintenance may involve, you know, spraying of the artwork, clean off the breeze and that sort of thing that might occur from a windstorm event or something like that.
And in the IGA, since we don't have it in front of us, were there any costs included for maintenance in that IGA?
No, the IGA that the council signed in March had all of those costs being borne by RTD.
So what is RTD saying no to? They agreed to cover the costs. Now they're going back on the IGA.
They are requesting proposed changes to the IGA for this specific piece of artwork. Yes.
So theoretically, we don't have to agree to changing the IGA. And we could still go forward with the art that was selected by the group.
No, I don't believe RTD would allow for that. No, I don't believe RG, RTD would, would allow for that. They're intending to, again, have this licensing agreement included, and they do not want to take on the responsibility for the installation or the ownership of the art. And so I'm assuming they would simply cancel the IGA if that were to be the case. But your first set of statements are absolutely correct. Council does have options here. If, if it did want to maintain the existing terms and conditions under which you entered into this IGA, you could do that, but it would mean choosing a different piece of artwork to do so. The other alternative would be to accept the amendments that the RTD is requesting and install the piece of art that was selected.
Did the IGA say that the RTD had first right of refusal on the art chosen?
No, I don't believe it says that in, in the IGA. They do have a vote and they do participate in the selection process.
It would seem to me they lost the vote.
May I offer an additional comment regarding the specific, in addition to losing the vote and their, their vote on the, on the committee, RTD's maintenance obligation is subject to the art piece meeting material and installation requirements in the IGA that RTD may be able to rely on, should they object to this artwork ultimately. And that requires, and the IGA is in the packet, and I'm looking at page three. The design life has to be provided, and I'd buy consumable and replaceable opponent, components, materials have to be designed to be corrosion resistant, have a life of 30 years, a minimum 15-year warranty, and then materials and coatings. And the size and location of the art piece are subject to RTD's approval. So RTD does have some discretion. I don't know if they've asserted that here, but they certainly could if they have not.
Yeah, they've made it pretty, pretty clear to us in working with their staff, their attorneys, and our attorneys that they would not move forward with the installation of this art under our current IGA.
Are they saying they won't be responsible for the installation either? And if so, what is estimated to be the cost of installation?
That was on a previous slide. I think it was $58,000 is, is in total, including installation, the piece of art.
Hey, thank you.
And Troy, the city was going to be installing the art, correct, under the IGA, or is that under the proposed amendment?
I believe that the artist actually does the installation of the art.
Right, but with the city. Okay.
Yeah. The terms of the new IGA would have that being managed by the city.
And I believe that is the, the current IGA as well on installation. So the existing IGA has that provision. Yes.
Thank you, Rob.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Thanks for the presentation, Troy. Just curious, is RTD more amenable to one of the other two installations that have been chosen as finalists here? And if so, what are the differences in those pieces compared to the one that was chosen that would make them willing to install and maintain those?
Yes, is the answer to your first question. I think if either of those two other pieces of artwork were to be selected, then the existing IGA and its terms would be acceptable to RTD. As to the specific reasons why those pieces of art are somehow different for RTD, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
I think that's kind of a critical piece here because it seems to me they all, I, I don't know what they're constructed of, but presumably they'll all have wear and tear and need upkeep and maintenance. And I'm just curious, what makes the one that was chosen so undesirable to RTD?
I'll, if you'd like, I'd invite Jody Hardy, who is in, in this meeting as well, to assist me with answering some of these detailed questions. She may be able to provide an answer there.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just to share what RTD's biggest concern with this particular piece was that it did contain some lighting elements in the piece, which was part of the initial proposal. However, the artist has assured us that they can remove those lights. They could provide extra sets of lighting. So there is some negotiation with the artist to move forward with this piece and, and bring it up to meet our maintenance standards or meet the minimum maintenance standards.
The minimum maintenance standards for RTD to accept it?
Yes.
And is the artist open to that?
Yes.
Well, Jody, just, just for clarification, even if the lights were removed from this piece of art, RTD is still not supportive of our current IGA with this piece of artwork, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So the maintenance standards she's referring to, Megan, are our, the city's maintenance standards. And, and whether or not we would want to take on the responsibility for replacing lights or light bulbs then would become our decision.
I see what you're saying. I, I'm with Councilmember Noble a little bit on this. I'm perplexed about why they would deny this piece of art to be installed, but would approve one of the other two. Outside of lighting, I can understand that presents some additional upkeep and maintenance. But if that's per the city, not RTD, it, it leaves me at a bit of a loss as to why we couldn't move forward with the piece that was selected.
If, if that, if that was a question, I'm sorry, I, I missed it.
It, it wasn't. It was.
Okay.
Comment.
I just wanted to be sure. Thank, okay, thank you.
Just a comment. Thank you for your responses.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Hurst.
So as stated, the cultural council had a long discussion about this in our last meeting last week. There were other designs, as we talked about the two others. One of the designs was two Cs made out of metal. They talked about making a third C into it to kind of represent Commerce City a little better. And then the third design was, it's not exactly the same, but similar to what we saw, what we have on Tower Road currently right now, all of which everybody liked, but the feedback that we got that there was significant more, significantly more positive reaction to the one that was picked than the other two. For the same, same discussion items that came up today about maintenance is what we spoke about the most. But some of the other side notes to, to discuss that came out of cultural council was, we like the difference in the art. We, we love all the current artwork around the city, but a lot of it's representative of, you know, animals, whether it's some type of bird or a bison or things like that. We like the difference in this. And so that was one of the reasons that people were drawn to it is just, you know, adds another layer of art to our city that is a little bit different than what we currently have, but also represents kind of the area. You know, if we're going to move away from accepting this one, I would ask that we go back to the committees because they put a lot of work and time into this decision-making process. And quite honestly, they're, they're having the same good discussions about this. Obviously, we on council have to worry about the financial side of, of the financial burden of taking on this for maintenance long term. And so there are additional things for us to discuss. But if we are leaning towards or end up not approving this moving forward because the IGA changes, I would suggest that we are very open about that reason and take it back to the art committee to talk about the challenges that we foresee with this piece.
Mayor Pro Tim.
So I'm actually, I, I in agreement with Councilmember Hurst. I, I would rather see this go back to the committee rather than signing an IGA and just having more expenses for the city and maintenance and upkeep when, you know, part of the IGA was for RTD to do that. And I, I struggle a little bit. I, I understand it got a positive response, but I struggle a little bit with how it rep, it really represents Commerce City. Maybe I just can't see it. I, I don't know. I don't. I'm just struggling to get the cactus and how that represents Commerce City. That's just my thoughts. But if it was me, I would rather see it go back to the, the committee and have them. I don't know if you start from scratch or narrow it down to 10 and have you guys go from there, but just my thoughts.
Councilmember Madera.
Well, I think, you know, the 2K funds are designated for this purpose and, you know, our residents are the ones who picked this. So to not support them at this point and give them what they want and all the time that they took out of their, their days and, you know, this is an involved committee to do this. I, I was not aware of, you know, how involved it was until I got a little more involved in the process. So, you know, I, I think we should support our residents and get them what they want to see in, in their station. Because that's ultimately what it is. And, you know, RTD, you can't say anything good about them. You know, I, I think it falls on us to, to pick it up and carry this for our residents.
Councilwoman Noble.
Yes, Mr. Smith, did I hear you say that a contract had already been awarded to this artist?
No, if, if I did say that, I miss, was misspoken. The resolution that council will have to vote on tonight would approve the installation of the selected artwork and amend the IGA. So if you don't vote on that this evening, then this issue would likely go back to the, has been suggested to the public art committee for further contemplation on their part.
It seems that if they're coming, if the artist is willing to come up with a different sort of lighting system that would reduce the cost, again, we can go back to solar, something like that, that would have a longer lifetime or whatever the case might be. I just, I don't understand RTD's attitude on this. If they were going to be this way, then they shouldn't have pretended to do a community decision. It should have been theirs.
Thank you.
Troy, I think it might also be worth noting that under the current IGA, I believe the art has to be installed by the end of the year. So if the decision is to go back, some modification probably would have to be sought from RTD and, and adjust that timeline.
That's correct.
I don't know if that's been addressed with RTD.
It's been discussed, but not formally addressed. Robert's correct. The, the IGA does call for that. And given where we are in this process, it's not a certain achievement that this would be done by the end of the year now. I think RTD would, even if we chose this piece of art, I think RTD would work with us on installation timeline.
Well, given the fact that RTD has missed several deadlines themselves, I would hate to see them trying to hold us accountable to our deadline. Mayor Pro Tim.
So I just wanted to ask you, Councilmember Madera, you ha, you made some pretty good points, you know, that if the residents did choose this. Did they actually under, have they? Let me see. Are they aware that if this gets put in and likes, all the lights may be removed? And so it might not be the artist's original intent. Are they aware of that? Like, so if that's, if this is the one that they choose, are they aware that there might be no lights there that, that it might not look the way they thought it was going to look? Or Councilman Hurst or someone that might have an answer to that?
Yeah, I don't think I can answer that question for you. At least at the cultural council, we did have that discussion. And quite honestly, the, the solar panel idea that similar to the Tower Road lighting, art on Tower Road that has the solar power lighting was brought up in the cultural council as a discussion as to how, how do we, you know, keep this going and maintain it without additional costs? And so I think those ideas are still being, the details of the type of light bulbs, the accessibility to, to, to repairs, those types of things are still being worked out as we're talking about because of this additional discussion that RTD brought back up. So I, I do think that's been considered. I, I think they understand that there's some potential changes. I think if it changes the piece completely, then we need to go back to the selection committee and tell them what's going on and see how we, how they would like us to proceed from there.
Councilwoman Noble again.
I needed to lower my hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Grimes again.
I'd really prefer to see us go back to RTD and negotiate something better than either changing the IGA altogether or having to choose a different piece of art or the city footing the bill for something that was already agreed to in the IGA. So I, you know, that's just my two cents. I'd prefer to see us negotiate just a little bit harder with RTD before we make any changes at this point.
And in response to that, Mayor, I would just indicate that, that negotiation process has taken place. And what we're presenting council with is the conclusion of that process. And I think there is no room left for additional concessions on the part of RTD given our discussions.
Is it a breach of the agreement?
I don't believe so. As Roberts pointed out, they have several areas within the IGA that I think they can reasonably exercise to, to make the decision that they, that they don't prefer this piece being installed.
Were there specifications in the design of the art when we went out to the community to ask for these, for these installations to be submitted?
Specifications in terms of what RTD's preferences were? No, those, those.
What they would ultimately require in order to install the art. It just seems unfair that we've got a piece of art that's been, you know, considered and chosen by a committee of residents. And now it's kind of late in the game to say, sorry, your, your design doesn't fulfill the requirements of RTD's material specs. Just.
I, I think staff shares your sentiment now.
Thanks.
Councilman Wardiola.
Thank you, Mayor. And also, you know, RTD's been a little difficult to work with. The same thing happened with the mechanical boxes. They asked us to come up with some Karma City artists to bring some designs, went through the whole process. When we let them see the designs, they didn't want to do them. We had to negotiate, staff negotiated that we got to pick two and they got to pick two. And I think this is the same thing where, for lack of, I think they're being a little bit of sore losers. You know, I don't think their design was picked or the ones they really wanted. And the committee picked the ones the committee wanted, the residents wanted, cultural council. And that's why they're doing that. Again, I, I definitely hear the points, but a lot of man hours, manpower hours we, with the residents, with the culture council and committee members were spent. And for us to go back and say, hey, sorry, we got to go negotiate. We talked about the negotiation like Troy said, and it's just RTD's kind of holding us kind of hostage, honestly. And it's not fair to our residents that, you know, if we don't foot this bill, then the, the whole time they spent picking this design just is going to go back. So it's just, I, I mean, I hope for staff and for us, it's a lesson learned with RTD. It's been very difficult working with them. We had to go back to the other two artists saying, sorry, we, RTD wants to pick two and we're going to pick two for the mechanical boxes. Same thing with this. It's kind of like, well, if you guys want to do it, you got to pay for it. It's not fair, but I think I, I would, I would echo what Oscar and Craig were saying is, I think we got to go with it. It is, you know. uh, you know, something that we'll have to foot. But I think it's something that our residents would be proud of, especially the ones that are on the committee. Um, the ones that took the time to be on the committee. And, uh, you know, that's, that's how I feel about it.
Councilman Hurst.
I apologize for keeping my hand up, uh, lower my hand.
Um, I think everybody has made some phenomenal points regarding this. I, I definitely agree that for the residents who put the time and effort into this, that going against that decision is, um, a slap in their face. Um, what I am concerned about though, is I believe there was a clause in the agreement that basically says that RTD can move the art at any time that they please. And my concern is if we push forward and we say, no, this is absolutely what we want. This is what Commerce City wants. It gets installed. And six months later, RTD comes along, takes it down and says, we've decided to put up our own art. And now we no longer have our choice and we no longer have something that represents Commerce City. Um, so given the, the breakdown in negotiating abilities and our negotiating, negotiations in general between us and them, I think that that's a significant concern that we should all be taking into account. Are they gonna keep the art up or are they just gonna take it down at their own free will? Um, it's unfortunate that we put together an IGA, they agreed to the IGA, and now they've used the cost of maintaining this is basically the bargaining chip is their methodology to, um, coerce us, for lack of better words. Um, because that's what it is. It's coercion into changing the art piece. Um, you know, so I, I would like to see us go forward with the art because it is what was chosen by the residents and it is what's there. Um, however, I don't think that we put ourselves into a good position by doing so. So I support going back to the other finalists and, and letting the, the councils that put forth the work consider, uh, given everything that we've just been told and given the gravity of everything and the negotiations and the coercion that's going on on the behalf of the RTD board members and, uh, their staff to say, hey, do you want to choose another one? Is there a better option that we can go forward? It's going to, uh, make sure that it is installed, left installed and maintained there. So at this time, I can't support voting in favor of this IGA. Any other comments? Anybody want to respond to those comments? Councilwoman Grimes.
I don't disagree with you, Mayor. I, I can't support changing the IGA at this point. At this point, I also have a hard time going back and choosing a different piece of art under the circumstances. Um, I, uh, I would prefer to see us take a beat and try to talk to RTD one more time before moving forward. Um, even if it's just, you know, at the next council meeting, we readdress this. Uh, but I think we owe it to the artist who was awarded this, uh, installation to, to give our best shot to negotiate something in an IGA that will allow us to move forward. Um, also echo your sentiments about the potential for having the art removed for that clause, uh, that was noted earlier.
Yeah, I was also concerned about that, um, that clause. And I, I think we should definitely negotiate that and either have some sort of, uh, you know, notice, your notice or whatever it might, may be. And that the artwork be preserved. And if it is removed, that we're able to relocate that within the city, you know, in its, uh, original form. So I, I think we do need to go back to RTD and, and work, hash some of those things out. No, I'm not so concerned with the first two, but that last one definitely concerns me that they can take it down for whatever reason. And, you know, it doesn't give us a whole lot of assurance.
Mr. Mayor, if I might respond. That, that language that you're referring to, Mr. Madera, in bullet number three on slide number 10, is standard language that appears in all the IGAs on the North Metro Rail, Railline. And, uh, RTD was not willing to discuss the change with, with us. So again, I, I suggest that our negotiations with RTD have run their course. Um, and these are the terms, this piece of art, uh, that they are willing to accept. And I would point to an example on bullet number two, all of the members involved in the negotiations very concerned about requiring an artist to supply $5 million liability insurance limit. That's not standard practice in the industry and we doubt you would find an artist doing this kind of artwork or public art that would have the sort of resources to supply that kind of limit. And I thought it was very reasonable our legal staff made to negotiate with that number with RTD downward. Again, they were unwilling to change that number. They only suggested that they would work with the artist. So in preparation for it to be at $5 million, our risk manager, um, and our legal staff have already contemplated how we would cover that, uh, if we needed to with the city's insurance premium. So, uh, in, in conclusion, um, while I, I think it would be nice for us to, to be able to go back and sit down and negotiate. This is a condition where the city has very little leverage in the negotiation as RTD is the owner. And the terms and condition, the terms and conditions that are outlined here, um, they are not flexible.
Yeah. So I guess my question is this just, uh, was this the RTD board's decision or was this, um, internal, uh, staff that's making this? Because it sounds like it would be beneficial to have us as a council maybe discuss this with their board. And obviously that wasn't standard language if it wasn't in our IGA to begin with. You know, for that bullet point number three. So.
Um, I believe that language appears in the licensing agreement. Um, and, and that's why we, we did not see that in the original IGA. But certainly that is, is the council's purview to, to do that. Um, in response, I would say we are not, our staff is not working with RTD board members. We are working with their legal counsel and, and staff members.
Yeah. Well, I mean, firstly, I'd be willing to reach out to some RTD directors and see if we can't work this out because, you know, this does seem like it was basically being sore losers and saying, we don't like that piece of art. And, you know, I'm no art expert, but if this is what our citizens are telling us that they want, you know, we, uh, we shall at least give them that or at least try.
Just to clarify, uh, if I may, just Mr. Smith, on the removal, I believe the current IGA requires mutual agreement of the parties to move the art because of the city's ownership. And the change comes because of RTD's subsequent ownership. They're, they are still paying, I believe, for the bulk of the art. But we're previously having the city own it and that allowed them to have the consent on the moving or removal. Um, but with RTD then owning the, the artwork under the amendment would give them greater rights and flexibility with it.
The amendment in the IGA would have the city owning the artwork. That's.
Then I, I apologize. I, I had that part backwards, but under the current IGA, they, uh, they cannot move it without the city's consent. And I think that was something we negotiated well back several months ago, but they're not willing to continue with this. And Troy and I have not spoken about this, but it may merit us having that conversation again, if, if that's council's wish.
Councilwoman Noble.
Um, yes, I definitely think that we need to have the conversation. I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Madera's offer to go talk to the board. That makes sense too. I mean, this is just, um, uh, nonsensical. And it makes one wonder why we would even go consider going into agreement with RTD in the future. If this is the way IGAs are handled, um, I, you know, as everyone has pointed out, certainly our residents, uh, and people on the panel made the choice. It wasn't RTD's choice, uh, but that's not how, uh, you resolve differences. It's very, I, I find it very disturbing that they're being, um, so difficult. And I thank everyone for all the time that they put into choosing, uh, choosing the art.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Just also would like to ask if there's a way that we can gain some assurance that if we have to move down a different path um, in terms of artwork, that these same stipulations won't be brought up at the 11th hour, uh, you know, very large insurance policies and such. Um, it just seems like those would have been things they could have identified ahead of time. Just would like to know that we can, uh, not run into that same thing if, if a different piece of artwork has to be chosen.
And Councilwoman Noble again.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't take my hand down, but I, I really appreciate Councilmember Grimes' comment too, because what she's saying is the RFP should have been very detailed and made it extremely clear to any artist submitting what the parameters were, what the cost would be, particularly this idea of the insurance. So i- it's quite, um, quite a mess. And I'm not sure how we're supposed to vote. Um, I don't understand the options that are before us because we're not accepting, if we're not accepting the change to the IGA, then what's left for us?
There's a resolution, uh, that the mayor will put forth, I think, at the end of the discussion and, and you would vote to approve or not approve the resolution.
That's correct. And if there were not, if nobody wanted to make a motion, matter would die and we'd have to go back and reassess, I believe. Correct? How we would respond and present that to RTD and say the council was not willing to accept this and essentially wants this artwork to proceed. Or come up with another alternative. I think there's always that option that we'll have to prepare for as well.
Yeah, I suppose that's option three, which I didn't think of, um, and is not on the slide. To not amend the IGA and send staff back to RTD as opposed to sending the issue back to the Public Art Committee is certainly direction you could give us at, at the conclusion of the vote and we'll, we'll take whatever direction council has.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. Um, and I was just curious, Troy, do you know is the licensing agreement the same in Denver and all of the RTD, um, light rail systems?
I, I have not personally reviewed other communities licensing agreements, but RTD has certainly made the assertion that the, the language they have provided is in common to all of their agreements with respect to public.
Thank you.
Mr. Tinklinburg.
You also have the option of simply terminating the IGA.
Thank you. Councilman Hurst.
You know, to, to try to summarize and compromise a bit, I, I feel like maybe we're all on the same page with the artwork, uh, with the intent behind how, how we got to here. And not trying to really change that. Although I do believe, uh, without doing a bunch of finger pointing, I think we can have a good discussion with the committees that selected this as to what the challenges are. But to me, it still seems like we have some questions to be answered. $5 million insurance policies absolutely ridiculous. Uh, that's about five and a half times what a commercial vehicle, you know, commercial motor vehicle is, is required to have for their insurance, which I think the most damage you could do, uh, with this art piece, but it'd be blown over by the wind maybe and, 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 you know, fall onto something or somebody. And that, that obviously would cost quite a bit of money, but not $5 million. And so that to me seems to be, um, a, a cost barrier that is put there for a reason and doesn't seem to be, um, beneficial to anybody in this situation. So my suggestion would be what was just brought up is, is we're, I, I at least am strong on keeping this as the decision, the, the presentation that was put forth for this art project was very professional and done very well. And that was the reason it was selected. Uh, not only the piece, but the background and the information that came along with it and the discussion and debate that went along with it. And I, and I, uh, understand what goes into those. And, and so I want to keep forward with that, but find, uh, answers to some of these, um, situations that we've discussed tonight before we make any major decision because as we heard, it's intended to be there for 30 years. We need to get this one right. We need to make sure our community agrees that this is the right decision. And also understands the challenges that we're all facing right now in terms of funding it for long-term maintenance. Um, but also how do we bridge the gap on this impossible insurance requirement?
Thank you. So moving forward, I see we have a couple of different options. Option number one, we could, uh, have a motion and a vote to continue this for two weeks from now and hopefully give an opportunity for somebody to reach out to the RTD Board of Directors to see what can be done and come back on to council in two weeks from that time period, um, whether or not we can make any progress with them. Option number two is we can approve the IGA and accept the artwork the way that it is and move forward with everything that's been presented to us. We'll need a motion in a second. We'll vote on that. Option number three is we can say we are not going to approve the IGA and send it back to committee and let the committee choose on that. Need a motion in a second to vote on that. I'm based on whatever people want. And then there may be another option out there that my brain cannot wrap its head around at this time. So this time I'm looking for a motion in a second on how the council would like to proceed. Keep in mind, we may have to take a couple of votes on this if there are differing opinions on what needs to take place. Councilwoman Grimes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone a vote on this resolution for two weeks and give council opportunity to reach out to RTD Board of Directors.
Hey, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue resolution 2020 dash 53, an IGA with RTD for public art at the North Metro Railline Station. We will open that up for discussion. And in addition to continuing it, we as council members engage with our, uh, RTD counterparts on their board of directors to see if we can get some influence and pressure them to change their course of action. Uh, any discussion on that motion? Seeing no discussion, we will not need the title read. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Count, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Huesman.
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
For the record, resolution 2020 dash 53, the IGA with RTD for public art at the North Metro Railline Station has been continued for two weeks. Um, would like to ask that everybody reach out to the board of directors. Um, if you need contact information on that, I'm sure that the city staff can send us an email this evening with a list of email addresses for the board of directors. Troy Whitmore is our area board director. Um, so he would be the first one that I would start with. Um, Mr. Bozek is also another one who's very engaged in Adams County. So I would also recommend starting with him. So hopefully we can get those email addresses out to everybody this evening. So you can start that outreach. Uh, next on the agenda is resolution 2020 dash 52, the purchase of property at South Platte Crossing. Would like to invite Deputy City Manager Smith to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Dylan, if you could please, uh, throw up the slideshow.
Give me just one moment, sir.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to discuss the purchase and sale of the property at 7190 Colorado Boulevard. Next slide, please. As a brief overview, uh, the purchase and sale for the fifth floor, which is actually called unit number six of the South Platte Crossing building, um, it is what we're intending to resolve if we can this evening. The unit is approximately 10,800 square feet. The purchase price is $1 million and council had previously directed staff to pursue this opportunity. Next slide. Um, in the 2018, the city council at that time during their retreat identified use of the space as a priority in developing human services, uh, emergency services for residents following the moving of the location of the county's human services building out of this facility. The Urban Land Conservancy bought the building and, well, they bought the site and they bought floors three through six. And the county maintains ownership of the basement floors one and two. Council held an executive session to give staff direction to pursue a deal to purchase this building and sign a letter of interest. Additional discussions occurred during 2019 related to this property and the Haunton Building. And specifically, council's direction at that time was to pursue buying the floor. Through negotiations with ULC, their board expressed a reluctance to sell a floor due to the condo agreement that's in place between the owners. The sale of a floor from ULC to the city would put ULC's ownership below 51%, which is not something their board had done previously or desires to do. Staff then negotiated a lease agreement with ULC and council declined to proceed with the lease agreement. That pretty much ended the negotiation process. Late in 2019, ULC recontacted the city and rekindled the negotiations with the change of their position and indicated a willingness to sell a floor to the city. The city manager signed a letter of intent with the ULC and the initiation of this negotiations occurred at that point in time. And so then here today we are with the purchase and sale agreement. Next slide. I've covered a lot of the material that's on this slide. ULC does intend to build affordable housing on the site in a different location than where this building is, but they own the entire site at this point in time. Next slide. Here's a layout of the floor plan of that floor in the building. Office space, cubicles, offices around the exterior. Next slide, please. There are some photographs of the condition of the facility. Some of the major sale points, earnest money due on the purchase is $25,000. Thank you, Dylan, for advancing me. Due diligence period of 90 days. This is less than what you saw on the PSA for a Haunton Building as a result of the fact that we, ULC's agreed to turn over all their documents to us after the earnest money deposit would be made. And they have very recently done the facilities assessments and those sorts of things. So the city may not need to do its own. And as a result, the due diligence period here is much shorter. Next slide, closing date, 105 days after the execution of the agreement with some ability to extend if there are further COVID issues. The deal would involve 31 parking spaces being reserved for city use and there are 97 additional parking spaces within the allotment for this particular building. A separate condo agreement between the co-owners would be required and it does in some ways regulate use. And there are some ongoing costs associated with ownership in this building. It functions very much like an HOA and takes care of maintenance of common areas, insurance, et cetera. There is a provision for special assessments for any possible major items that might need to be replaced in the future. For an example, in 2019, the assessment to both of the joint owners was $62,400. I would assume, while not negotiated yet, that our assessment would be significantly less than that since we would only own one floor in the building. The city had previously contemplated some use in this space that involved potentially relocating the housing and CDBD functions of the city's operations to this space, using it also in conjunction with other service providers in the community as a resource hub. We had discussed a community navigator position. Something like what you heard from Carolyn Keith during last Monday night's presentation. Certainly nonprofits would be located in this space and the final option is not knowing what might happen with the pandemic in the fall. This space could give the city additional space should there be additional requirements for social distancing related to COVID-19. Last important note for the council to know about the condo agreement is in terms of the board and voting. There are a total of seven votes on the board. The city would control one vote as a result of the purchase of and being the owner of unit six if it proceeded. Next slide, please. So there is a resolution for council's consideration this evening. The resolution, if passed by council, authorizes the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement and gives the interim city manager or his designated the ability to negotiate and take the actions necessary to effectuate the purchase and sale agreement. Last note, there are no funds specifically appropriated for the purchase of this property or its ongoing potential costs. However, the council has appropriated $1 million for the purchase and sale of the Haunton Building and it's certainly now that that purchase has been passed on by the council. Certainly an opportunity there if council wished to proceed with this purchase to reappropriate those funds for this purchase. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Thank you, Troy, for the presentation. I have a few questions. I was taking notes. But one of them, if the city is still under reduced operation and staff, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, because I was just curious, you know, how, what would be the timeframe? You know, with the building sitting that long and then with the COVID, what is, like I said, what is the timeframe? And then are they willing to, if they're willing to sell, why was the cost so high and did the city offer like a different cost?
Yes, I'll start with the last question. That is a negotiated price. They actually started higher than that price with us and, and we have negotiated down to the $1 million purchase price. And I don't feel like there's much room for them to go further. They have a cost recovery model, ULC does. And the rent that they even provided for us and the lease agreement we negotiated was fairly high for them to achieve their cost recovery model. In terms of the buildings being vacant, I'm not sure I totally understand your question, but I think you're talking about relocating city operations to that facility. Again, the list of uses that I provided for you in the presentation were simply those that had been contemplated in the past. They certainly are not in the form of recommendations from staff, council about what to do with the space necessarily.
And then do we know what the cost for maintenance and operations would be as well?
Those costs specifically would be negotiated in the condominium agreement that would, would need to come during this period of time. So an exact dollar figure is not known at this point in time, but based on the numbers they gave us about what they split this year, I'm thinking they'd be, they would not be in excess of $50,000 annually.
Yeah, because that's just a concern I have. I'd like those little more numbers just because of the COVID and then the cost and then like would we have to employ more staff as well to go to that location when we currently still have current staff that are unemployed or, you know, being furloughed. So that's just some things I would like to little, you know, know a little more and possible negotiations for the cost, which I guess you said there is no room for negotiation, correct?
Well, what I indicated was that the purchase price was the negotiated price that they had started with a higher amount of money. And we negotiated down to a million dollars. In terms of staff functions locating in that facility, there is not a current need that exists for staff to relocate out of the civic center to this space. That is not a need that is driving this rec, this presentation this evening, I'd say.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff on this one? Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, thanks again. That's, that's quite a site. It used to be human services for Adams County. And they vacated the building. My husband had space there for one of his offices for workforce development. Lots and lots of dust and dirt sales off of the gravel company that's in front of it. No particular public transportation to this area either. So it's, it's kind of isolated in a, in a weird way. But I'm curious about what Commerce City actually owns as a government, what we as a city government own in terms of vacant land in order to meet the needs of office space or services in the future.
I would defer to Roger, but I believe they did an inventory of city land ownership a while back on a council request.
Yes, that's true. We don't own vacant land and that's part of the facility assessment. That'll be part of the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan has a number of components, a transportation plan, a parks, recreation, golf plan, facilities plan, economic development plan that all feed into, hang off of the overall comprehensive plan. So the facility plan assessment was to look at what would be the future needs in terms of providing services to the city residents. And of course, 20 years from now, you know, we're going to see much more of a population in the northern part of the city than we will in the southern part of the city. So what services need to be available there? So that's the type of assessment that needs to occur. Currently, we do not own any vacant land where we could locate additional facilities. So that's a one-winded answer to your question.
And the, this sounds like the city staff is not necessarily recommending purchasing this site. And I do have the same issues that Councilmember Alan Thomas does regarding the unknown annual costs or monthly costs for the HOA maintenance, et cetera.
So first I would say in response to your first question, to this point, all this work's been done at council's request. We hadn't been asked for a staff recommendation. My personal opinion, after looking through the documents and looking at the building, is it will be a bit of a mixed message to you. On the one hand, this property is in far better condition. The building's in better condition than the Haunton Building was. I don't think there are, there will be the need for some time for the kind of large capital investment that you saw in the Haunton Building in this particular facility. Secondly, I would say we have had a partnership with ULC and they would very much like for the city to enter into owning part of this building with them as part of the redevelopment of the station area. And you mentioned public transportation. This is directly across the street from the end line and will have lots of access for public transportation in the very near future, presumably. And it also lies very close to the opportunity zone that we have that has had a lot of discussion between the city and the county's leadership with respect to joint projects that might work or redevelopment in that area. So I think based on the discussions I've been involved with, with previous councils, there was a real sense of urgency to be an owner in the area where all of that kind of activity was taking place and knowing that property values and potential for service delivery to a particular segment of the community would be very advantageous in that area. So that was sort of the desires that were expressed to me that I recall from these discussions. On the other hand, ma'am, we are in the midst of a budget shortfall. We have made fairly significant operational cuts this year to, to our budget and revenues moving forward through the rest of this year are suspect, given what I see happening with the COVID-19 crisis and how that might manifest itself come this fall. So there is some risk associated with this purchase. But that said, you do have funds appropriated in the budget and we have not taken those funds, that $1 million that was sitting there for Haunton still is sitting there. We did not plan at the first cut of our cost-saving measure to take those funds from the budget. We certainly would if they remained there and things continued to go, that would sort of be a next step. So you do have some available funding for the project. If the location is advantageous or strategic for the city council, then I do think there is a possibility this might be a good fit to be in the area. Hope that answers your question.
It does. Location, that is a selling point, given the other aspects that you're, that you're identifying. But the, the second part of my question was the actual costs. Annual costs, estimated annual costs.
Work for operations.
Uh huh, and homeowners. You said there would be like an HOA condo fee.
Yeah, so the condo agreement is something that would be negotiated during the time of the purchase and sale agreement. It wasn't something that we were able to do ahead of time. And ULC's agreed to pay $10,000 of legal fees towards us and renegotiating that agreement because it's a three-party negotiation. It would be between us, the ULC and Adams County. And so the, that would certainly be part of the negotiation process. I did think the data that they provided to us though was fairly insightful. And that is that the, the fees that each of them paid to operate that building this year were $62,000 between the two of them. I can't imagine that the city would, would want to pay a third of that fee, given we only, only own one floor out of a six-floor building. So if you just split that based upon the, the square footage that the city would own, I would suggest it would be somewhere in the neighborhood again, less than $50,000, hopefully closer to $30,000. Now, that doesn't include any special assessments that are going to occur in the future for replacing systems in the building. That's a reality. But at this time, we're not aware of any major systems that are needing replacement. And the parking lot, for example, was just repaved at the time that this was the transaction between Adams County and ULC. Hope that helps.
Councilman Hurst?
Mr. Smith just did a very good job on covering kind of what I was going to go over and really what it was was, you know, I seem to remember there was $60,000 was the annual cost for the whole building and so that's what I was going to mention. So thank you for going into detail on that. And the other thing was the location. I think that was one of the biggest reasons. I remember, distinctly remember a conversation that me and Councilman Gordiola had last time about being in that location as it grows, as we see it growing. There's, I don't know if it was in this discussion, but I've had several discussions about the sand and gravel pit across the street from RTD Station, talking about picking up and moving to a new location in the metro area. And then that's where redevelopment has possibility of occurring. It, even as this develops, there are some interesting pieces to this that I think do add risks. Obviously, COVID-19 adds the risk with the budgetary issues, but just planned investments in the area. How, how do we manage being on the fifth floor and being accessible if there's residential in between? Those types of things do come into question for me as we talk about this. But I still think getting services to the area or having the ability to have a location to have services not only provided by the city but also by nonprofits would be, this would be a fantastic area that I think could really begin to bridge the gap of having services between the north and the south and more of a centralized location. Even though this is kind of tucked away in the southern side of the city, it does start to move services north of where they currently are. So it's not an easy decision. I think for me, I would have been it it's not an easy decision. I think for me, I would have been far more supportive of this without the COVID-19, especially with the direction we went with the Honan Building. But I still feel very strongly about this area's future development and having the ability to provide the service that we all expect our city to provide in the future. Here centrally located in a great spot for future development in our city.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I completely agree with Craig. You know, had COVID not been going on, I would say I would it wouldn't even be a thought. It's like, are we, it's an excellent location. It's one of the few areas of the city that is served by RTD because there's a bus route that goes to it as well as new end line is going to be directly across the street. Also, ALSUP is directly behind this property, which is going to be sold in the the near term once the the new elementary school is built. So there's going to be a lot of movement in this area. Adams County is leading the development of the light rail station and really trying to put an effort into picking that area up and, you know, making it something similar to the Westminster Light Rail Station that we can be proud of. So there is a lot going on here. And when we had originally proposed buying a floor at the Human Services Building, it was because we wanted to bring services back to the community. When Adams County picked up and moved across the street from the Country Club in Westminster, that was inaccessible to so many people in our community. And you'd see cars parked in the empty parking lot, you know, trying to figure out where to go for these services. So, you know, we kind of took the approach, well, if we build it, they will come. And if we can bring in some nonprofits and different services that we're used to have in the city, back into the city and provide an incentive, you know, this is one way of doing it. And, you know, I I know a million dollars looks like a large number, but when you look at it square footage, you're paying $92 a square foot. And now it's not like the Hanan Building where we're on the hook for absolutely everything in the building. Now you have tenants in common and you're splitting those costs amongst the the county, the ULC. And there's also plans for affordable housing going in in that same parking lot for for the back. So there's a lot going on here and you know, it it's a difficult time, right? Because if we purchased this right now during COVID, chances are it's going to go vacant for a little while because, you know, let's face it, the municipal centers, you know, running at what half capacity or or less in terms of people using the building. So, you know, that that is something to to factor in. The the timing is not ideal, but it is, it is a good investment for the city. And, you know, we, as we grow as a city, are going to need more room. And, you know, we, before COVID happened, you know, people are sitting on top of each other in the municipal center. So you know, this is, it would help to have that comprehensive plan, right, to know how far out we are and and these needs and where this would fall in that plan. But I I do support the investment, even though it's a difficult time, just because of everything else that's going on in the neighborhood.
Councilman Mardiola.
Troy, is there a timeline? Do we have to buy now? Are they in a rush to sell? Have you had any talks about that with the the ULC?
Yeah, we we started this process pretty early in the year. It was the end of last year when the city manager signed the the LOI. We would have brought this to council much, much sooner had it not been for the COVID outbreak. Though the process has already been fairly delayed, would would be my reaction to that. And I think ULC would very much like to see us make a decision about our interest level in in the purchase. The the deal points in the slide lay out the the timelines for the purchase. So again, the closing date would be 105 days after the execution of the purchase and sale agreement. So if you voted tonight to have the mayor sign that, then 105 days from now, which is a fairly long period of time out into the year would be when we would be closing. And that could potentially get extended for COVID again. So that's a long answer to say, I think, would be good for us to make a decision on this when the council's comfortable to do that.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the item? Does anyone in council wish to make a motion regarding this? Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I'll move to adopt the resolution 2020-52.
I have a motion to adopt resolution 2020-52, which is to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the property itself by crossing. Is there a second on the motion? Councilman Hearst.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2020-52, which is a purchase, a resolution for a purchase and sale agreement of the property itself by crossing. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, well, the, excuse me, Councilwoman Noble.
There are still a lot of unknowns. And if we bring up COVID, you know, there is ventilation issues and lots of concerns that way as well. I'm just, it seems to me that that we need to go back and negotiate one more time. If this conversation on the negotiations started pre-COVID, then we need a COVID negotiation that takes into account what the circumstances are right now and extend extend all of these dates. 105 days is nothing. That's three months, a little over three months. July, August, September, maybe into October. It really seems like we're not going to know what's going on until we look at maybe January. And so to have an earnest money period of six months instead of three months, I think, would make a lot more sense. I can't imagine that they'll be able to get anyone else into the space either. I had noticed that it was being advertised when we had this conversation about Hanan a few months ago. So they haven't had anybody else step up and purchase it. So I'm not sure that we need to feel all that pressured and that we can have another conversation with him with them that asks them and provides our position regarding the current situation with the coronavirus.
Councilman Mardiola.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I I definitely see Councilmember Madera's and and Hearst's position, and I and I think it would be a good investment. I just don't think it's the right time right now with everything, the unknown, to spend the million dollars. And that's why I asked Troy to see if we have some more time. And so I I couldn't support this right now. I think it is going to be a a hotspot with all the stuff that's going in. And I mean, and that's the risk I think I'm willing to take to maybe someone else does buy it. But right now, with the shortfall and the unknowns, I was all for it. I think, like I said, I think it's going to be a good area there. But with the COVID, I just couldn't support it right now. Yeah.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Yeah, I would echo most of what Councilman Mardiola just said from strictly from a budgetary standpoint, unknowns of what the rest of this year looked like related to the economy. I would also not be in support at this time, but do appreciate the comments from Councilman Hearst and Madera regarding wanting to get into that area. Just won't be supporting this motion tonight.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to be clear. I don't think ULC is going to attempt to sell a floor in this building to anyone else. I think they were willing to change what is their normal operating procedure in order to have the city buy a floor. And that's why they came back to us in the manner that they did after several months. And I think it took them some time to reach that conclusion. But there've been a couple of comments about maybe it gets sold, and I just wanted to let you know, I I I don't believe ULC is attempting or will attempt to sell the floor. What they will do is attempt to lease the space out of the building. And if they get leases in place, they may be unwilling to sell to the city. I don't think it's going to be sold to anyone else.
Councilman Hearst.
Yeah, I think my biggest concern about not not getting into it today is price. Now, there's the the ULC has a fiduciary responsibility, and they have a cost recovery method that they have to follow. I'm assuming to pay back bonds, right? So they have the fiduciary responsibility to get a market analysis done. And if we get into this building, if if we have the intention to get into it at a future date, which that, I don't know, I don't know what everybody's intentions are. My biggest worry would would be the the market rate and the market analysis will come back far higher than $1 million as as development proceeds in this area. And so I'm not saying today, tonight is our only chance. I'm just saying, in the very near future, is going to be the best time for us to buy because as that development, as the RTD end line opens, the market analysis and value of that property is going to continue to increase, which will then put us in a bind if we want to purchase it of why did we not purchase it for $1 million when we had the opportunity? And now it's 1.2 or 1.5 or whatever the case may be. That that's the that's the reason. If we didn't have the $1 million set aside for the Honan Building, if I didn't think that this area has the potential to develop at a fairly decent rate, I'm talking over the next five years, then then, yeah, I I feel everybody else's same concerns. I'm concerned about the the, you know, budget for the next three years. I'm concerned about all of those things. Doesn't change the fact that, you know, real estate is always a good investment. And you you know, even even doing so, I'm sure the ULC will have and the county will have agreements or or that we can't just go and sell it to whoever we want. But I I'm pretty confident that we could at least get our money back if we were in a situation where we needed to. So that was the reason for my my suggestion for support.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I'm I'm in the same same boat here because originally they came with the lease option for us and maybe Deputy City Manager Smith can let us know what the the total value of that. But I think it was close to $800,000 over the the life of the long-term lease. And so, you know, that's why we didn't go that route because that to us was, you know, money that you would never recover. Now that they've come back to us with the actual purchase agreement and at a reasonable price, in my estimation, you know, I I think we're not going to be in a bad situation. If we do find ourselves, we can always get out. And, you know, I just think that if the the money's there, we we had it set aside for the Honan Building. We're in good financial shape, you know, per our projections, even with COVID. And, you know, we've already began to cut the budget where we we need it to. So I'm not concerned that $1 million is going to put us in a bad situation, or I wouldn't be supporting this. So I think that the benefits of being in this area, being able to provide services for our residents that need it in this area far outweigh the the risk. And, you know, it it is a, it's a scary time. I mean, we're we're all in this time together. And I'm sure, you know, when you look at making big purchases in your own life right now, you think about them twice and, you know, as we should. So you know, I I do know that there's a little bit of risk there, but I don't think that the risk is, you know, that great that it's a, it would scare me from, you know, what can be years of services to our residents in that area.
Councilwoman Noble.
Councilmembers Hearst and Madera, you make good points, and I am hugely into transit-oriented. The fact that the end line will be there is really critical in all of the development that's going on around it. There does seem to be a lot of interesting potential. I would, though, like to see the periods of time in the agreement extended. Would you be willing to consider having a staff go back and talk to ULC about extending this this to, say, 180 days without a penalty if we have to drop out for some reason?
I'd be agreeable to that.
Councilmember Hearst, it's your motion. Would you be?
I I seconded it, and I and I agree.
Oh, you seconded, sorry. Lost track. Sorry, Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, but it was Councilman Madera's. He said he agrees. I'll agree to the change as well.
Okay, great.
Mr. Madera, can you restate your motion with that amendment, please?
Yeah, move to sorry, let me get the number here. Move to adopt resolution 2020-52 with an amendment to extend the closing to 180 days without penalty.
And I second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2020-52 as amended. I'd like to thank everybody for the debate on this. I think that everybody raised some great.
Mayor. Oh, I apologize. I was going to suggest that if council's desire is to have this pushed out, we probably want to take it back to ULC and then bring the document back to council for formal approval. We can, we can treat the motion that way and do it. But it would leave and there would be some ambiguity as to what the approval is if if it's approved in this form. So I should probably should not have interrupted you. We'll 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 handle it however this goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Given that, I will, after I get done speaking, ask Mr. Madera and Mr. Hearst to consider amending their motion to a continuance for two weeks to give the council and opportunity, or the staff, an opportunity to go back to ULC for negotiation on that. I do appreciate everybody's comments on this. I think that this is probably something where everybody sees the pros and cons of it and is probably as personally conflicted as I am on wanting to execute something like this that we all feel would be good for the city, but questioning whether this is the right time to do so. You know, we have a beautiful civic center. It is absolutely gorgeous. It's, you know, one of the shining parts of the Victory Crossing site to have that civic center there. One of the things that I look at, though, is we have a lot of social services programs that are in there as far as the housing and as far as people going in there to to take care of needs, personal needs. And it's right next to the police department. And I know for some people that turns them off on wanting to go into that facility and deal with that. And having a facility that is dedicated to human services that is co-located with Adams County Human Services Facilities as well as the ULC's mission, I think, is a great thing for the city, especially given its location right next to the RTD Station and next to the ability to to move about the city using mass transit. So for that, I really do support purchasing. So for that, I really do support purchasing this property or this floor in this property. I think that it's a good thing for us going forward. You know, there's a lot of things about uncertainty over COVID, and I get that. But, you know, if we don't do it now, then are we going to do it six months from now? Are we going to do it a year from now? What challenges are we going to be facing then that cause us to continually say, now is just not a good time? Now is just not a good time? At some point, you just have to pull the trigger on it. You just have to make the decision that that's the way that we need to go. So I am fully supportive of us moving forward with purchasing this. But if you guys do want to go and seek an additional period for being able to negotiate that with the ULC, then again, I would ask you to consider changing your motion from approving it, as the city attorney said, with that clause to just a continuance for two weeks and give the staff those two weeks in order to go out to the ULC. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Madera posed a couple of questions to me in his remarks, and I was able to locate those answers for the council to consider as additional information. This this was back in 2018, but the lease rate for that same floor was $16, 1599 a square foot. And so the annual lease obligation, had the city entered into that agreement, would have been about $183,000 annually.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
So six years in, we'd be at a million bucks. With no recoverable cost. I mean, that that's kind of the argument. Sorry that I just jumped in there. The the other thing to to point out about the county's investment is they are investing millions into their fleet services right up the street from that. So there is going to be significant investment in the area just from our local government partners, not only, but also private business as well.
Councilwoman Noble, your hand is up. Thank you. Councilmember Madera.
Okay, so we had a lot thrown around and I'll go ahead and amend the motion to make it less ambiguous to continue it for two weeks to allow staff the time to go back to the ULC and see if they're agreeable to the extended term so that they can bring back the document for us to approve our later date.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst.
Agreeable to that, yes.
Thank you. This time I have a motion and a second on the floor to continue Resolution 2020-52 for two weeks for the purpose of allowing staff an opportunity to go back and discuss council desires with the ULC. Any discussion on that? Seeing no discussion on that, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
No.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
No.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Sorry, I'm having technical issues. I cut out. I lost my Zoom, so I didn't hear the updated motion. I'm sorry.
The updated motion is to continue the resolution for two weeks to allow staff to renegotiate an extended closing date, I believe.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
I believe I have six yeses, two noes, and one excused.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are ordinances on first reading. First up is Ordinance 2270, the Walmart Community Foundation Grant. Is there anyone on question and stat council that has questions for staff? Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, I just was confused. If someone could explain to me what the public safety involves. And then where are other local retailers such as King Supers and Save-A-Lot contacted as well for the, you know, for the same offer? Thank you.
I know my name is on that, the that resolution that came up, the item. We didn't contact anyone. Walmart provided this community safety grant as an opportunity, and we applied for it. Typically, that money is spent on National Night Out. When we do our backpacks for kids to school, it's spent on community programs. So no, we did not solicit the money. It is an open publication from Walmart that we apply for every year. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Chief.
Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing no questions, I'm looking for a motion in a second to introduce Ordinance 2270 by council as seated and approve on first reading. Mayor Pro Tim.
Motion to introduce ordinance 2270 by council as seated and approve on first reading.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to introduce Ordinance 2270 by council as seated and approve on first reading. Is there any other questions for discussion? Seeing none, would like the clerk to read the title and take a roll call vote, please.
Ordinance 2270, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Walmart Community Foundation Grant in the amount of $4,000 to be used for public safety and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Ordinance 2285, the Grand Pass, Grand Sis Youth Services Grant. Is anyone on council have questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, I'm looking for a motion in a second to introduce Ordinance 2285 by council as seated and approve on first reading. Councilmember Madera.
Look to introduce ordinance 2285 and approve by council as seated.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
I second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to introduce Ordinance 2285 by council as seated and approve on first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll ask the clerk to read the title and take a roll call vote, please.
Ordinance 2285, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Tony Grams's Youth Service Grant Funds in the amount of $4,000 for the costs associated with COVID-19 support of the Epic Youth Program and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is Ordinance 2286, the Click It or Ticket Grant. Is there anyone on council that has questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to introduce Ordinance 2286 by council as seated and approve on first reading and ask if there's any discussion. Oops, I'll get to that in a moment. Sorry. Mayor Pro Tim.
Motion to introduce ordinance 2286 by council as seated.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to introduce Ordinance 2286 by council as seated and approve on first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll ask the clerk to read the title and take a roll call vote, please.
Ordinance 2286, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation Grant in the amount of $3,780 for Click It or Ticket and $19,000 for driving under the influence DUI enforcement efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Finally, in ordinances, we have Ordinance 2287, the DOJ COVID-19 Grant. Is there anyone on council that has any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second. I'm sorry. Was that a question or a motion, Councilwoman Noble?
It's a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so since this is from the Department of Justice, is this also yours, Chief, as well? The 77,000 and what might it be for?
That is correct, ma'am. The money is going to be used for expenditures that have already been paid out, that were previously on budget related to COVID-19 purchases, face masks, additional cleaning gear and the likes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to introduce Ordinance 2287 by council as seated and approve on first reading. Councilman Hurst.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2287 by council as seated on first reading.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to introduce Ordinance 2287 by council as seated and approve on first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, ask the clerk to read the title and take a roll call vote, please.
Ordinance 2287, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Department of Justice Grant Funds in the amount of $77,507 for the costs associated with COVID-19, public safety needs and mitigation, and the authorization of the expenditures thereof.
Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is administrative council business. Is anyone on council have any administrative council business they'd like to bring up? Councilwoman Grimes.
Yeah, previously had requested that we have a discussion on the mask mandate from Tri-County Health. It's still appearing on the agenda, and I just wanted to comment, I don't necessarily think that's needed at this time.
Thank you. Any other administrative council business anybody would like to bring up? Councilwoman Noble.
Yes, I wanted to go back to a few things that people raised earlier this evening. One was about our leash law and somehow we're not putting it to use. These incidents occurred in Buffalo Run twice in a week, and we either need some sort of marketing campaign or reminder what the costs are when it comes to fines. I would like to see more enforcement and perhaps Chief Nichols could look into that since animal control operates under the police department. But it is very, very concerning. People should be able to walk on their streets without having to worry about dogs off-leash. No matter the kind of dog it is.
Yes, ma'am. I don't know if you were asking for comment.
It would be good.
I can tell you that we do, in fact, enforce the leash laws. We're currently budgeted for a CSO supervisor and six CSOs. In about two weeks, I'm only going to have two. So there are other issues that we're dealing with besides not enforcing the law. It is enforced. It is one of the laws that is required that we see for ourselves, which is extremely difficult, given the the number of folks that we have, that that's their primary responsibility. So there are some other issues besides not just not enforcing the law. It is, in fact, enforced when we do find those violators. I will be the first one to tell you that the position I've taken with my staff is that education is always the most comprehensive way to get compliance across, not necessarily starting with the citation. So for the most part, they do issue warnings when it is appropriate. But when we do encounter chronic offenders, summonses are in fact issued. But I'd be more than happy to take a look at that program and and make some recommendations.
Yes, because it seems to me that if injuries are involved, that that should kick it up to another level. Now we're outside of education. Now we're looking at something different than education. A dog off-leash that's wandering down the street, that's one thing. A dog that attacks other dogs and the person walking the dog, that's quite a different story, and I do think that elevates it to a level beyond education, and it would be great if we could see something along those lines because we shouldn't be afraid of walking on our streets, especially especially now. We need vitamin D. That helps to fight COVID. Also, I would like to know if there's a reason. Not a reason. Could we resume commission meetings, monthly commission meetings? It seems that there's all kinds of meetings happening. People who want projects in Commerce City are doing Zoom meetings. The Planning Commission is meeting. But the Senior Commission meets informally. I don't, I would like to see at least the commissions resume meeting monthly.
I believe it was council action that suspended all of the commission meetings. So are you trying to make a motion in order to reverse that decision?
Okay, I'll do that. Yes, I would like, I'm moving that the commission meetings resume.
I have a motion, Councilman Hurst and Councilwoman Grimes, you have your hands up, but if you can lower them for a minute while I go through this motion. I have a motion to resume all board and commission meetings through the Zoom platform for those that wish to participate. Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
I second the motion. Can we clarify it's virtual meetings, correct? Not?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, because I I'd second the motion.
Yes, and I think Mayor Hughesman clarified my motion. He did a much better motion than my motion, in fact.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
So I have a motion in a second to resume all board and commission meetings virtually using the Zoom platform for members that have the capability to do so. Is there any discussion on that item? No request for discussion. We, Mr. Hurst.
Mayor. I'm sorry. My my one question was to the city staff, are we ready for this? Can we support all of this? I I know that we got support in the cultural council through a special meeting, but I just want to make sure our current situation, COVID, I know that a lot, a lot of workforces have now adapted to this new the COVID-19. So I just want to make sure that our workforce is ready to support these commissions because that is that is the labor-intensive part of this is the note-taking, the posting of all the meetings, the so on and so forth. If we're prepared, then I do support this.
The main reason. Do you want to go ahead, Robert?
Sure, I was just going to mention that the ordinance that authorizes electronic meetings, while while council did suspend them, Mr. Hurst, that availability of resources is the the consideration that would limit the city manager from allowing those meetings to proceed if we can't have the staff available because it does require additional resources from information technology. those meetings to proceed if we can't have the staff available because it does require additional resources from information technology um to conduct those meetings. Um, and so council can certainly resume them, but there may be disruption if there's a limited availability of resources. As well as some boards don't have to meet monthly if there if there are not um activities to occur, like Board of Adjustment wouldn't or Derby wouldn't necessarily meet monthly if there was an activity to occur before them. So um Roger, I I hope that supplements what you were going to say in advance.
It replaces some of what I was going to say, so thank you. But uh, yes, it it was a staff consideration in terms of resources that would uh have to be dedicated to setting up the electronic meetings. It has gotten easier, so uh i- if you don't mind, let us uh take a look at what it would take to set up all the various uh boards and commissions and uh get a report back to you if if that would be satisfactory for you.
That would be fine. I think this the sooner we give normalcy to our residents, the better it is for everyone and they like participating in our community and they like having to say so. I just, I just, you know, I I understand this is going on and and continues to go on and it will be going on, so we just need to now adjust for for it. So thank you very much. Um, Roger, that would be perfect. So if you want to put this on hold until the next meeting, um, I'm willing to do to do that. Are you willing to do that, Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have other items, Councilwoman Noble? No, thank you. Councilwoman Grimes, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I I thought of a couple more things I'd like to bring up. Um been using the Rec Center during this reservation time and um want to thank Parks and Rec for getting that organized and reopened and giving us the ability to use the facilities. But would like to ask about maintenance of those facilities and specifically, um, you know, I've been frequenting Bison Ridge and the pool and we see a hard water buildup on all of the equipment. Um, rust on some of the I-beams that are in there. Um, some things that just seem like they maybe could be kept up a little better just to make sure that we're preserving that investment for the city um rather than waiting and getting behind the ball on that. So just wanted to ask about um upkeep and maintenance of the pool. Uh, specifically, uh, so I don't know if anyone wants to respond to that now.
Will certainly take a look at that. I don't know if Carolyn is available to uh respond right now. I know they uh have been working on maintenance, so a little disconcerted to hear about those issues. So let us look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, and I know water is a challenge. Uh, the hard water deposits are a challenge for for everyone, right down to um our dishes at home. So I understand it's a a challenge to be um, it's a continued maintenance issue, but notice that there's quite a lot of it right now. So that and then um I've continued to see posts and receive emails regarding uh Republic Services and uh missed trash pickups and it seems to be every single week we're seeing these comments and people are frustrated and I I understand that I'd be frustrated too if if mine was being missed. Um, and just, you know, I've been um trying to follow the protocol of bringing those to you first, Roger, and and I've encouraged residents to go to customer service with Republic. But um seeing a lot of pushback on that too, because there doesn't seem to be um any response from Republic or acceptable response from public. Uh, people are being told, oh, we'll stop out and pick that up this afternoon and they never come, you know, those kinds of things. And so it's just um becoming a big frustration and would like to know at what point we can hear from Republic. And um, you know, what actions can we take to make sure they're holding up their end of the the contract?
I've asked staff to uh take a look at our options in terms of working with Republic. Um, I've gotten a partial response and I know they're they're working on additional information. So uh, I think, you know, one of the things is for us uh that's already in the contract is to track violations and uh, you know, use that information in our our working with Republic. So uh, that's something that we're actively doing and uh, you know, wanted to make sure that when you hear of those that you do let us know of issues that have that have come up. So um, let me talk to staff further and get additional information. And uh, it may be that we will need to come back to you with a presentation uh in in several weeks. Uh, we have budget hearings coming up or budget retreat, I should say. So I have to be a little careful on the schedule. But um, I I know there are ongoing issues and and we're trying to get a handle on what we can do to help and hold Republic accountable.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Roger.
Council, excuse me, Councilwoman Noble.
Thank you and uh, thank you, member. Councilmember Grimes, you reminded me of things that had been on the table also. Uh, when did you think we would be hearing more about the impacts of the police accountability bill and hearing from um Chief Nichols about the department as well and its policies?
That is scheduled for a presentation. Um, trying to get to the right screen here.
Believe it's next week, Roger.
It is.
Super, super. Thank you very much. Uh, the second one is about um the budget and you had uh mentioned in an email to us, uh, Roger, that there would be some sort of training on the budget would be good if we could have that in advance of actually looking at the budget. I I do hate making decisions in a vacuum such as the uh million dollars we're discussing for the the fifth floor. But um, we do need something like that. It would seem to me before we actually have the budget retreat.
So one of the uh orientations that I've asked the finance department to provide was how to use the information that's available to you on Open Go. Um, but if you want additional information about the budget itself, uh, what type of information would you be looking for?
Well, uh, step one would be to meet with the uh finance department and have them run through the existing budget. I I still think it's unusual for us not to receive a budget report monthly. Sort of like a treasury report. Where are we on revenues and expenses? We discussed tonight that we may be, we may have a shortfall, but we haven't had that formal discussion yet in these months. So um, all of that kind of thing, I think, is important. Revenues, expenses, et cetera.
So you're looking for a financial report more so than uh orientation on the budget document itself. Is that correct?
All of the above, sir.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Any other council members have any administrative council business? Seeing none, we will move on to council reports. Mr. Tinklinburg.
Nothing additional. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sheasley.
Nothing additional, sir.
Thank you. Any other council members wish to make a report? Councilman Wardiola.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to just let people know that we're doing the music in the park uh virtually watch parties and it's uh gained a lot of momentum. Um, the last one, we had a local band, Chicano Heat, and we had over four hundred people that tuned in ten times uh the amount of the first time with comments and shares. Uh, Thursday, we have another one coming up, so it's very easy. You could go onto the cultural council Facebook page and share it from there. Um, and so I just wanted to bring that up, that it's something that we thought outside the box. We still wanted to pay the the bands that we already contracted under during this time and some entertainment for our our community and it's going really well. So any additional shares, support, um, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Noble.
Uh, yes, I would like to talk about water for a minute. So uh, uh, Mayor Hughesman and I are on two committees together. One of them is the Adams County Water Quality Association and the other one is called the Water Commission. Uh, neither of them have names necessarily that reflect what they are. Uh, the Water Quality Commission is really about uh sewer pipes, I guess. It's not about water quality. And the Water Commission is not really a commission. It's more of a informal uh gathering. We had uh both of those meetings in the past ten days or so and I brought up questions that residents had asked about. Um, for anyone who is having questions regarding um contamination, taste, et cetera. Uh, South Adams County Water and Sanitation District says that they meet all federal standards set by regulators. Um, in addition, the CDPHG does sort of like blind tests with them. They've already tested the water and then they ask um, uh, South Adams to test the water as well in order to demit, to find out whether um uh, Adams County is, South Adams County is um uh, water testing is matching their water testing. Um, in addition, uh the water softening plant will be up and running apparently around February of twenty twenty one. The cost will be about seven dollars a month additional. Our systems apparently that we are, some of us already have for water softening will be redundant. The um board had considered uh some sort of tax rebate or some other sort of rebate if you actually already have uh water softening and that will not be the case. They couldn't figure out a way to do it equitably and fairly. Uh, there are some uh major contamination issues that still exist. Uh, one of them is the dioxane, um, which is a cancer causing agent. The EPA is okay with it, but South Adams County Water and Sanitation Districts wants to see if it can be better. It's uh, the situation can be better in terms of clean water. Uh, chemical sales company, which is out of business and was over on forty sixth, is the contaminator of the dioxane. The dioxane is in a plume that runs along the uh west side of um Quebec. And that is part of our alluvial groundwater, so it affects everyone. And of course, we learned about the dioxane when we were first discussing the dog park and heard back regarding a contamination on that site and steps that they were taking to um alleviate. Then we also have the uh PFAS situation. Uh, the PFAS uh in Commerce City is uh considerably higher than standards. We're at about twenty five hundred PPM versus around hundred or under. That is uh the federal standard. However, Denver Water was brought in to mix and that diluted it down to um a level that's approved by federal standards. Um, CDPHG had actually commended South Adams County water and I know this because I've been to CDPHG about this regarding uh the agency coming forward voluntarily with information to say that they had found this uh level of PFAS in the water. It's probably from the arsenal. It may be, pardon me, not probably, it may be from the arsenal and it may also be from the Denver Firefighting Academy. As you know, the PFAS can come from airport um firefighting foam when when you're putting out oil and that kind of stuff. Uh, and of course, more recently, uh SNCOR uh found a PFAS issue um, under their site as well, but that was not part of the discussion last week, but that is also something we learned. Um, I think that covers um the high points. Uh, the water softening will affect the taste of the water because it will uh reduce the calcium and the calcium is what causes the the mineral taste. Um, if I'm overlooking anything critical, Mayor, I welcome you uh jumping in.
Thank you. I think you covered everything.
Okay, okay. Um, can I go back uh to something? I think we're doing council reports, but I want to go back to uh a speaker who uh was during um citizen communication regarding the process that we use for um uh transparency in terms of lawsuits and potential lawsuits. And I think that she called it notices of claims. Uh, would that be possible, Mayor?
Good, go ahead.
Okay, uh, city attorney Sheasley. Um, how could we get that changed so that we have more uh transparency? As that citizen requested, there's uh seems to be no reason. From my point of view, the more transparent we are, the better.
Sure, there are a number of things that council can do about transparency on various parts of its operation. I would recommend council study the issue and have some discussion about it, possibly at a study session. Um, let us compile some examples of cities that do their upsides and downsides. Um, I believe there are some administrative costs. Um, some cities post not aware of anyone that would necessarily post a notice of claim um on their website. Allegations of discrimination or harassment, things that may be filed with a regulatory agency may have confidentiality requirements by law. Um, and lawsuits are, of course, though, all public records, though. Uh, so some cities post summaries of the claims, some post the actual litigation documents that are filed and without any comment really because uh any entity is not necessarily going to comment on its litigation posture. So I'd like to identify some communities that do that and some some costs associated with with doing that. Um, one thing that I certainly can do, should council want very easily, is if a lawsuit is received, I can report that during a city council meeting. Um, so it is at least reported there if that's council's uh desire to do it that way. Um, but if council wants, we could certainly bring back some options for having something on the city's website or a a regular report that would be public.
Well, if it's if it's uh legal for us to do this kind of thing, then I think that it would um that would make uh perfect sense. Um, when there is a vacuum, it gets filled. And the more um transparent we can be, the better it is uh for the community, especially in these days of uh social media. Uh, filling in the blanks, if you will. And that's something that I know I don't want to see for the future moving forward. Thank you. Do I need to make a motion to do a study session on on this issue or something?
I'm happy to develop some information um for council to consider and then uh we could, I could send that out and then council could take up a motion later based on that, whether they want to do a study session or implement something. So nothing would need to be done now. Sure.
All right. Okay, thanks.
Councilman Hurst.
Quick response to Councilwoman Noble's uh comments and it it it's just a, in addition, so on a positive note and something that I think we need to keep our eye on with CDPHG, uh, a new bill passed this year. We just call it the P P fast bill, but essentially um the petroleum delivery or petroleum transportation industry self-imposed a fee for every load delivered to a gas station. It's a hundred dollar fee. Some of that money goes, a a s- a smaller portion goes to CDOT and uh state patrol and the rest goes to CDPHG for mitigation costs to handle PFAS and with our elevated um numbers here in Commerce City, I think we should, I I'm not sure how the money's going to be distributed, put it that way. So if it's a grant opportunity, um, something for you guys on the board to make sure that South Adams County Water District's aware of. There is going to be, there is a funding source now for the next five years guaranteed um to help mitigate those. And I know the concentrated areas are DIA, the arsenal. arsenal and down in Colorado Springs around the military bases. And so those, those funds with our elevated numbers, I believe we should get, not a majority, but we should get a, a portion of those funds to try to mitigate the issues in Commerce City. So if we can just keep aware of that, I will do my best to quickly find that Senate bill and pass it along so we can keep that in everybody's purview. You know, it's PFAS and then the other word is the AAAF, the aqueous film forming foam or whatever. And so that's why we, that's why we are using these acronyms because the, the full, the full long name of the chemical is, is not fun to say. So.
And, and if I can add Senator Moreno and Representative Benavides, who both are for our area, were the prime movers on, on that legislation. So it's really important that it passed. Thank you.
Any other reports? Councilwoman Noble addressed what I would have addressed in my report, which was the water quality meeting and the water commission meeting. So I have nothing else to report. Thank you everybody for your time this evening. There being no further business to come before the city of Commerce City. Mr. Gibson, Mr. Gibson, were you trying to talk?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I was moving rooms so my partner could use the bedroom for sleep while we were conducting the city council meeting. I missed out on the boards and commission discussion earlier. I've prepared a draft virtual meeting procedure and I'm meeting with this board of commission liaisons on Thursday to discuss how many Zoom webinar license, licenses we'll need to do this. So this is in motion and we are preparing for it. So hopefully August 3rd, I'll have something more concrete for the council, but I did want you guys to know that it is something that we're working on right now.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, there being no business to come before the city of Commerce City. We are adjourned. See you all on tomorrow evening to talk about land development code or changes for oil and gas. Thank you. Have a good night.